A belated good morning. The City of Boston's zoning board of appeal hearing for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law and the executive order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure that this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notice page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. A number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and can then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record and please lower your hand once you are done speaking. These instructions may be repeated throughout the hearing. My name is Mark Erlich and I will be acting as chair for today's meeting. I will now do a roll call of today's board minutes. Mr. Fortune?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Robinson?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Rugiro.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, and is Mr. Hampton here?
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. A reminder to all applicants, we are a five-member board today, which means that passing a motion will require all five members to vote in favor. If an applicant chooses to wait until we have a full board, you are entitled to request an administrative deferral, which will be automatically granted. So please let us know before you present your case. Mr. Fortune will now begin with the call of the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call the extensions and if you could just give me your name and address and then I'll go into the purpose. Calling case BZC three-two-nine-zero-three-one-eight-eight High Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Fred is on.
Just name an address for the record, please.
Mr. Mannix?
It was on earlier, he may have fallen off.
Yeah, I saw him earlier.
All right, I'll go, I'll come back to it if he comes back on, just let me know. And then call the next case, calling BOA four-four-one-two-five-one-five-oh-eight East Broadway. Name and address for the record, please.
We can't hear you, Zachary.
Five-oh-eight East Broadway, South Boston.
What was your name? I'm sorry, sir, I didn't get your name.
Zachary Pinnock.
In regards to five-oh-eight East Broadway, the board originally granted this relief on August eleventh of two thousand and fifteen. The applicant has never requested an extension till the relief expired on August eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. I recommended the board deny this request because the tolling does not apply and the relief expired years ago. Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion for denial.
Is there a second?
There's a second then, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion is denied.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine-seven-two-nine-six-five-forty-eight Geneva Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lins, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, I'm going to read for the record, forty-eight Geneva Street. The board originally granted this relief on February seventh, two thousand and twenty, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally expire on February seventh of two thousand and twenty-two, but tolling applies. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date and that the applicant may return and to request their first extension if necessary. Mr. Chair, make a motion for the expiration date to be May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine-seven-two-nine-six-three-fifty-eight Lubbock Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board again, Richard Lins, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Fifty-eight Lubbock Street, the board originally granted this relief on January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally expire on January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, but tolling applies. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is May eighth of two thousand and twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date and that the applicant may return then to request their first extension if necessary. Mr. Chair, make a motion to the new expiration date of May eighth of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA nine-two-seven-six-three-nine-one-hundred Mount Pleasant Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Philip Haresco, thirty-six Brownfield Street, Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Haresco, this in regards to one hundred Pleasant Ave, Mount Pleasant Ave. The board originally granted this relief on November first of two thousand and nineteen, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally have expired on November first of two thousand and twenty-one, but tolling applies. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief does not expire until that date and that the applicant may return then to request their first extension if necessary. Mr. Chair, make a motion for the new expiration date to be February sixth of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Cares.
Madam the Vassal, is Mr. Mannix on?
Yes, he is, I do see him on.
Okay, I just want to call it back in for the record, calling BZC three-two-nine-zero-three-one-eight-eight High Street. Name and address for the record, please.
I think you have to unmute yourself.
How's that?
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry about that, technology is not my suit. Fred Mannix, two-sixty-seven Lot Street, Boston, Mass.
Thank you, Mr. Mannix, regards to one-eight-eight High Street, the board originally granted this relief on November twenty-sixth of two thousand and thirteen. The board granted several extensions of the relief due to the involvement of land court litigation. Most recently, the board granted an extension of the relief until January twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-two. However, the extension was unnecessary because the tolling applies to the extension of the board that granted it on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, until January twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. With tolling, that extension release remains valid until May sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. However, the applicant has asked for an additional one-year extension because of the property is now involved in litigation in the Boston County Superior Court and that the applicant is still undergoing BPDA design review. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that its prior extension does not expire until May sixth of two thousand and twenty-two and offer any, and offer any extension that the board finds appropriate to allow the applicant to resolve litigation and continue with BPDA design review. Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we grant this another one year to May sixth of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to call the nine-thirty hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty if you could give me the address first, please?
Good morning, Mr. Fortune Attorney John Pulgeni, I'm here on six-fifty-four-six-sixty East Broadway.
All right, thank you, further market, calling BOA one-two-five-nine-one-eight-two-six-fifty-four to sixty-six-sixty East Broadway. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulgeni, ten Forbes Road in Rancho, Massachusetts. That was a, this had been withdrawn through ISD, but I think where this meeting got rescheduled from a previously advertised meeting, it was still on the agenda.
All right, well, as you know, given that we have a five-member board, you're entitled to an administrative deferral in any case, so can I have a motion?
I'm going to make denial without prejudice.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
They're withdrawing, thank you.
They're withdrawing, yeah. It's a withdrawal.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty? Hearing done, I'm going to call the first case, calling BOA one-two-three-one-zero-one-one-Five Garden Court Street. This is excavate the basement to extend living space for unit one to the garden level. The unit count will still stay four, the garden level will become part of unit one living space. Violation of Article fifty-four, section ten, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Greg McCarthy for Five Garden Court.
Welcome, Mr. McCarthy, just a reminder for you and every other applicant that you, you could choose to have an administrative deferred, we are a five-member board. You want to proceed?
Thank you, I will proceed.
Okay, please, please tell us about your project.
Sure, so Five Garden Court Street is a five-story building in the North End. Previously, it was a four-unit with a store on the ground level. We are proposing to combine the first floor with the garden level to make one bi-level residential unit. The unit will be a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half, sorry, three-bathroom. The additional bedrooms will be entirely above ground, there's actually exit door in the rear for this one and then this one right here. I don't know if you can see my mouse, exits out to the ground level as well.
What is, what is the basement currently used for?
It hasn't been used for anything for, I would say, probably thirty or forty or probably more years, but before that, it was some kind of store.
Okay, and the connection to the first floor is through what means?
Within the unit, there's a staircase down.
Okay, I will ask the usual questions we ask about this. What is the, first of all, what's the floor to ceiling height in the proposed basement?
It is eight feet.
Eight feet, and that will be...
I'm sorry, eight and a half feet.
Eight and a half feet, and that will be achieved by excavation or that's the current height?
The current height is eight feet, but we are actually, we don't have any additional land in this building, so we have to put our infiltration system basically smack dab in the middle of the basement, so we're bringing down the ceiling height almost a full foot.
So you are excavating?
Yep.
How, how deep, how far?
So the excavation goes down twenty-four inches, but it's only going to give us an extra eight or so inches of height.
Right, because you're lowering the ceiling. So what is the height from the, you said that, that the, the garden level in the rear, is it ground, is it ground levels, it's a walkout situation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, if you're going down two feet, that will, that will no longer be the case, I assume.
So the, the front, so, sorry, I should have explained this better. So the, the rear has always been lower than the front where the utilities are? So the actual back part of it doesn't have to come down, it's the, it's this middle basically from the bump up out is where the infiltration system's going. Then we have to, we're only bringing this down in the back here, another six to less than a foot in the back here. So it'll be maybe a one, one step up to get out the door.
Okay, and what is the, from the, the new finished floor, what is the height to the, the ground level outside? What is the height from the floor to the ground?
Twelve inches.
In the, in the, not, in the, not in the front, I assume?
Oh, no, in the front, it's about three feet, and that goes into a utility room all on the front.
Okay, and is there a bedroom in the basement?
Yes.
And that's, I'm looking at the plan, that's in the rear where, where it's, it's a walkout essentially, correct?
Exactly, this was a walkout here, this other bedroom had a walkout as well, but we changed it to a egress window.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans look fine, no, no questions. There's not great information here, but it looks like that is, he's on in terms of the height. Just real quick, one question on the, can you just explain to me, just because it's not shown on the plan, between bedroom two and three, it does show an egress well. What's the condition on the left-hand side of Offiever Property, does that get access to a shared sort of exit?
Yeah.
Passage way or something?
Right, so right to the left, you walk back behind the building? So there's a passageway to the left, you couldn't go, you couldn't go to the front of the building, but you can go behind it to the right now.
And then you come out in the open, is that your property next to you to the right that has the driveway?
No, that's not ours.
That's not yours, okay, but that gains access to a...
Yeah, that's an alleyway for all, I think all the houses on Garden Court as well as that section of Hanover.
Okay, no further questions from me, thank you.
Mr. Robinson, are there elevations or sections in the plans?
There are not elevations or sections, but based on my assessment, you know, I mean, it's, it's not perfect, obviously, on, on Google Maps and when I sort of looked through this, it, it does appear that the grade slopes and the way that the configuration of the stairs at that level should be, as he's saying, about a foot below, which is actually lower than a standard window anyway, so I think it's, it should be acceptable.
Okay, I, just to the applicant in general, our concern about basement living space is that it not be underground. And the way, the only way we can affirmantly determine that is if, if the plans include elevations or sections. So just a word to the wise and to anybody else who is, you know, applying for living space in the basement, that's, that's what we, that's the only way we can really make a determination. Are there questions, any questions in the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to this app, this case?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is John Romano from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have letters of support from the North End Neighborhood Council as well as the North End Waterfront Residences Association. We had also received, the applicant also gone through a butters meeting where there was no issues raised at that time. At this time, we'd like to defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Chair, we have those letters as well.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, can I have a motion then? Motion approved. Is there a second? Yep, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-five-two-zero-one-three-seven-forty-four to seven-forty-eight Dudley Street. This is to remove the proviso for takeout, switching owners, the violation is Article six, section four, other protection or conditions. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Chris, I'm representing seven-forty-four Dudley Street.
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit about the, what you're proposing?
So the, the owners want, they're actually switching owners and I understand to do that, you need to remove the proviso.
Yes.
So it's contingent on...
What is, what is the current function of the space and what is the proposed function?
It's a restaurant, it's a Dominican restaurant, it's going to stay the exact same way as well with the new owners, nothing is changing. Same name, same menu, same ingredients, same employees, it's just a new ownership, that's all.
Okay, what's the name of the restaurant?
Pica Longa Restaurant.
Okay, thank you. All right, seems pretty straightforward, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, no question, I mean, I just had a question and since it's all existing, trash and everything is taken care of as required by code, no issues with that.
Okay, has it...
No, I'm asking a question. I want to make sure, yeah.
Question for the applicant, has a new owner experience with takeout?
Yes, she is, she couldn't, she was having trouble joining in today, but...
So how, how do you take care of trash and other things, this is just my question.
We have a closed dumpster out back, we're going to keep it locked up, so other people, we've had issues in the past where other people come and just throw the trash over.
Yep.
We're also going to be monitoring it, we have a camera out back pointed and we're going to have employees regularly clean it up.
Great, thank you, no, no questions.
What is the, the new owner's experience with other situations?
Working at a restaurant.
With running a takeout program?
She had a restaurant in the DRS, Dominican Republic, and she's also been an employee here under the previous owners.
Okay, but this is her first local ownership?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, but she's been working at the restaurant, so she, she knows what the, what the drill is?
Yes, she knows everything there.
Okay, any questions in the board? Is there anyone here to, to speak on behalf or in opposition to the application?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, Denise DeSantos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has support from local businesses and direct abutters, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
A second.
I'll second.
But the proviso that the no, the usual takeout, with the proviso, that's the usual takeout language.
Right, Joe, it should be for this applicant only and with the usual takeout language.
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one-two-zero-seven-six-two-one-two-sixty-five Amory Street. There is a companion case, BOA one-two-zero-eight-six-zero-nine-two-sixty-seven Amory Street. This is erect a new four-story multifamily dwelling containing nine residential units and nine parking spaces on a newly created lot with ten thousand eight hundred eighty-three square feet. Violation of Article twenty-nine, section four, this is the G pod, applicability. Article fifty-five, section nineteen, multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-five, section twenty, the usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section twenty, the rear yard is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section twenty, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section twenty, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-five, section forty, R Street loading is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section forty, R Street parking is insufficient. This is two-sixty-seven Amory, direct a new sixteen thousand eighteen square foot headquarters for youth enrichment services and Boston Social Service Group. Their newly created vacant lot with ten thousand two hundred eighty-eight square feet. Three-story building to contain offices and classrooms as well as their first-floor ski shop. Violation of Article twenty-nine, section four, this is the G pod. Article fifty-five, section twenty, building height is excessive. Article fifty-five, section twenty, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section twenty, the rear yard is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section forty, R Street parking is insufficient. And Article fifty-five, section forty, R Street loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Lee Goodman, seventeen-eighty-five Columbus Ave. I'm here with Brian Van Dorp, who's the CEO of YES Youth Enrichment Services as well. Good, good, good morning.
Yeah, just, just a quick reminder, Mr. Goodman, I'll say this periodically, that we are a five-member board. You have a choice of either deferring until such time as we have a full board or, or proceeding.
We understand we're going to proceed, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board, my name is Lee Goodman with Watermark Development and we're here with a partnership, a joint venture with Youth Enrichment Services, a social, a social service, service agency that serves about sixteen hundred kids a year currently in their location on Mass Ave. It's the site across from the brewery in Jamaica Plain, formerly JM Brown, who moved to Dedham. It's an unusual site, there's significant hardship in the fact that the Stony Brook Culvert runs across the front and the MBTA has an easement along the train tracks of the rear. That being said, we figured out a creative way to build two buildings and that would include a bus drop-off for the children. and that would include a bus drop-off for the children of Youth Enrichment Services. And if there's questions later on about how they run that program, Brian is on to answer. Uh, there's some five or so significant variances that both buildings share. FAR has been increased from one-oh to both one-point-five and one-point-eight, uh, respectfully. Um, the height is currently thirty-five feet in the local industrial zone that it's in, but we're going to forty-five feet. And the reason that is, is because it's in what's called Plan JP Rocks, the BPDA rezoned this entire area, and we are now aligning with the zoning that the BPDA wants to see in the plan. So again, both buildings are forty-five feet and forty-six feet. Um, there's a rear yard setback issue, uh, because one building is three feet from the rear yard, but again, that is to the MBTA easement, so it's three feet plus the twenty feet of the MBTA easement to the train tracks. And then there's a parking violation for off-street parking. But again, we have five spaces for Youth Enrichment Services plus the bus drop-off, and we're actually gonna rent spaces from the MBTA to have additional overflow parking behind. And the housing is nine family-sized three-bedroom units, all with their own parking place, so nine units, nine parking places. Lastly, uh, the, the building, the housing building does not include an affordable unit. However, we worked with the neighborhood to create a benefits package that was, uh, sub, you know, equivalent to the cost of one unit, and that included, uh, improvements of the sidewalks, improvements of two new crosswalks on either end of the project, a pathway through the southwest corridor, a hundred thousand dollar donation to Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation, and Watermark agreed to work pro bono for Youth Enrichment Services throughout the pre-development and construction. Uh, it's really a great project, Youth Enrichment Services does so much for the community, I'm sure many people know who they are. Uh, they provide skiing and outdoor trips for kids throughout the city. This will allow them to expand from their current location to a permanent headquarters. Uh, so with that, if there are any questions, we'd love to answer them.
Okay, thank you, yes, I, um, very familiar with, uh, with YES, my, my son used their skiing services many years ago. Um, uh, okay, so the violations, you've got, you've got a height violation, but that's consistent with the BPDA recommendations, you got rear yard, but then that's also mitigated by the setback, uh, and you've got parking, is, is anything else that I'm?
Uh, the multifamily use, um, you know, it's, it's an L I zone, so at one point, these were all commercial spaces, uh, on Amory Street and JP, but, you know, through JP Rocks, the city's looking to incorporate additional housing into this area, it's about a block from Stony Brook T Station.
And is it proposed housing rental or condo?
Condom condominiums, homeownership.
And, and mark, and all market rate because it's nine units?
It's all market rate, yes.
Okay. Um, what, what, when you talked about the difficulty of building over the Stony Brook culvert, what, uh, what did you have to do to deal with that?
So it's basically, the site is a huge easement with a little building area, and what we did was basically jigsaw puzzle this design into it, so we pushed the buildings back to the back of the site, away from the culvert. The lucky thing was, because of the importance of the bus drop-off and the fact that the neighbors across the street were concerned about height, this, this culvert allowed us to push the buildings away from the abutters across the street, and min, you know, minimize the height impact and the massing. So we can't build over the culvert, but we just pushed the buildings all the way to the back of the site, closer to the train tracks, away from the, the other side of the street.
Okay, so there's no, there's no construction on top of it?
No, we're not, you know, we're, we are gonna use pilings just to be safe for water and sewer, um, just to get all load away and below the culvert. I mean, the culvert's about eighteen feet deep into the ground, and then an additional eighteen feet of a circumference, it's a, it's a monster there, so we'll just go down with pilings in the front of the building to get all the load down and away from the culvert.
Okay, Ms., uh, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Uh, the, the drawings look good, I think it's a, it's a great program, certainly we know YES, um, familiar with them and what they do for the community, but I think, uh, it's nice to sort of see the blind end of a residential, especially homeownership on this site, which is a difficult site, but I think the landscaping, um, is consistent with the, the community green space adjacent as well. So I, I really have no questions, I think that the plans look, uh, pretty good, and, um, I understand the sort of complexity of the site between the culvert and the railroad track, so no questions from me on the proposed program, thank you.
Okay, any, uh, any questions from, uh, from the rest of the board? All right, any, is there anyone here to speak, uh, on behalf or in opposition to the project?
Good morning, my name's Attorney Cheryl Fenary, I speak on behalf of the abutters in opposition of this plan. While the plan does present, um, I did submit a letter and also the abutters.
Hang on, hang on a second, um, we usually, the order of speaking is usually elected officials or representative elected officials, so.
My thought.
If there's anybody who, if there are any elected officials on board from the Mayor's Office, can they speak first, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board, Tiffany Caballero here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant has undergone an extensive community process. Throughout this process, he has received unanimous support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, while also receiving eighty-eight letters of support, um, and elected official as well. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer the board, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak in, in support, we're gonna do support first and then opposition. So, anyone else to speak in support?
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we do have those letters of support the Mayor's Office voted, we also have that letter of opposition.
Hey, hold on a second.
Mr. Chair, I do have raised hands, but are there any other elected officials looking to speak?
Yes.
Okay, if not, I'll start, um, the testimony here, Kevin, you, I, I sent a request to unmute you. You say name and address for the record, please?
Uh, my name, my name is Kevin Hicks, I live at twelve Gardner Street in Roxbury.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm a Roxbury resident, born and raised, uh, back in the early nineteen seventies, I was a YES kid, my sister and I, uh, were involved in a ski program for a couple of years, um, it was a way to get out of the city, keep us, you know, active and outdoors. Uh, it was always a great program, um.
Okay, so you're, you're speaking in support, I assume?
Speaking, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, we are, we're actually primarily looking for an abutter, so, uh, we, there's not, there isn't really any question about whether YES is a, uh, a, a very good program, I think that's, we all understand that. Uh, anybody else to speak in support, any other elected officials, representatives?
Adams, I live at two-hundred Amory Street, so just a couple houses down. And I wanted to speak in support of this project, um, number one, because Watermark does a fabulous job with, uh, all developments they do here in JP. I'm lucky enough to live in one of their previous, uh, buildings that they did, uh, so I just wanted to speak to the quality of the work that they do, and we're also really excited about the work that they're proposing to do to the sidewalk and the crosswalk there, because it really is a dangerous area in Jamaica Plain, and, uh, difficult to walk with strollers and be safe, and that in, the crosswalk that will carry across over to the brewery, I think, will also really benefit the businesses that are in the brewery. So I just wanna speak in support of the project, really appreciate the creativity and the, uh, work that they're gonna do, like I said, to the sidewalk and to the park area, because I really think that many people.
Thank you, but thank you very much. Anybody else?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, mine operates representing the carpenter senior, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, uh, anybody to speak in opposition?
Just wanna get to Rebecca as well, I'm sorry, Rebecca, I prompted to mute, have you unmuted, go ahead?
Rebecca Plout-Mattner, I work at the J, I'm the Director of Real Estate at the JPNDC, which is a direct abutter. We own the hundred forty thousand square foot brewery complex that is directly across the street. Um, we are extremely supportive of this project, we believe the massing is very appropriate, given the location near T Stop and fits in well with our buildings and others in the neighborhood. Um, this density is really, uh, quite appropriate for this immediate neighborhood, in addition to the improvements that will be made, and we think this will be a great addition to the neighborhood and, um, look forward to it proceeding.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I think we've got enough, uh, speakers on, on support, can we hear from, uh, from the oppositions?
Good morning, my name's Attorney Charlotte, and I represent many of the actual persons that live right where the project will be made. They welcome the YES program, they are happy to have the program, it's really just a matter about the height issue. Um, when you're in JP, you don't feel necessarily like you're downtown and the buildings are just so high that you can't see what's around you. Many of the persons in the letters that I've submitted have lived on Armory Street for fifteen, twenty years, and this is their neighborhood, and they were not included in this community process. I'm talking about directly across the street, directly next door. When you just look at the list of persons in the letters I've submitted, we're talking about the actual persons that'll be affected most by this project. The persons that are gonna be living here and living with this project, and obviously the additional traffic, they welcomed the YES program. They welcomed, um, bikes without bombs, they've, and in that project, they were able to work through everything. I think that they were just left out of the community process, they do not feel that their issues were taken very lightly, and they do support the entire project except the height. They would like it to remain at the thirty-five feet, we believe the project can be accomplished appropriately for that space. We understand it's either gonna be storage or something additional at the top floor, we just don't think it's needed in terms of completely changing what that area looks like. When the fort, if the building was to be planned as proposed, all of my clients, they're not getting able to see the park anymore, it's just gonna completely change the structure, we do want the project there, we are happy to have YES here, but we're just asking that there not be a variance allowed in terms of that height difference.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And.
Uh, uh, thank you, we got, we got the message, so the issue for you is the height. Um, can I just ask the applicant a question, what is the typical height of the, uh, of, uh, I'm obviously very familiar with the, with the area, what's the typical height of the, of the buildings and brewery?
Brewery, I think, is about eighty feet, obviously, it's, it's the tallest building in the area. Um, you know, get to the corner of Amory and Boylston, and you see the old Amory Community Park where Community Servings is, they're about forty-two to forty-three feet, Harvard Legal Services is forty-five feet. Um, you know, I think the big thing is, it's currently a parking lot, so anything that we build there feels like an extreme change, and we understand that, but there was also a substantial, long JP Rocks planning study that was done here, and the entire community, um, agreed on these heights, and we're really just following the maps that BPDA wanted to see there, so.
Okay, no, yeah, I was, I was just, uh, trying to get, uh, sense of the context. Um, all right, anybody else to speak in opposition?
Just a quick, just a quick clarifying question, I think I just missed it. Yeah, the comment, the new, the proposed building is gonna be how tall?
Forty-five feet.
Okay.
Okay, um, there's, if there's no other testimony, can I have a motion from, uh, from the board?
Uh, motion approved of BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion, Eric.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-one-two-zero-six-nine-three-two-eighteen Hancock Street. Suppose off, off, one, off-street parking and curb cut. Violation is Article ten, section one, parking, parking is located in the front yard, on the front yard. Next violation is Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking and loading, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the use of open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I just want to take Sarah, two-eighteen Hancock Street.
All right, so could, tell us what you're proposing, please?
All right, the, uh, we are looking to do, um, one to two parking space, um, uh, here, they are on the space right, uh, on the front yard, uh, right on the house here. Um, uh, but there's, um, the, the reason why is, is, uh, a lot, you have no parking space right now to park, and, um, there's been a lot of, uh, it's a very, very busy intersection, intersection there of houses, uh, and we've had a lot of our cars damaged because it's a very, uh, busy, uh, street, and then it's, a lot of, uh, damages on our cars have been done with, with other cars because it's, it's so busy and also crazy.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, um, this is, this is a fairly simple proposal. Um, is there parking on Hancock Street where you propose to do the curb cut now?
There, there was, but they're doing new constructions right across, uh, from us now, and, um, we've seen the plans, there would be no, um, no to very little spaces to park in the future.
Wait, wait, they're doing something ac- ac- across the street?
Yeah, it's a big building, I don't really know the name of it, but it's a big building.
No, that, hang on, hang on, I'm not asking about across the street, I'm asking on your side of Hancock Street, where you're proposing to put a, uh, a, a driveway and a curb cut, is there parking there allowed now? Yes or no?
Not, not, not right now because of the construction, but there was, that's, that's.
There is, Mark, there, there is on-street parking, he's talking about the dot-block development that's going up on Hancock.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm not interested in that, I just simply wanna know, because it looks to me like we're essentially replacing one on-street parking space with one off-streets parking space. Um, it also looks to me like this is, uh, somewhat, uh, front yard parking, and, uh, we tend to, to look skeptically at just a no net change, uh, in terms of parking availability, so. Okay, Mr. Robinson, uh, what's your read of these plans?
So, I, I think I concur with your comments, I'm a little nervous, it, it does feel like front yard parking, the, the piece of this that, uh, I guess, maybe Mr. Hampton can speak to, you know, I, I did work on dot-block, um, and I permitted that, and part of dot-block was the reworking of the entire Hancock intersection that this falls into, and I guess I just wonder, if we approve this, how will that work with the future intersection redo on dot-block? Cause I think the curb lines are all changing, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, just, uh, on Mr. Robinson's point, uh, Mr. D'Amico has spoke, like to maybe put his comments into the record.
Please do.
He put, he basically regards to, uh, two-eighteen Hancock Street, he puts a motion to denial because it's front yard parking.
Okay, um, and Mr. Hampton, do you have any, uh, thoughts, uh, relative to Mr. Robinson's comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I know that Mr. Robinson's correct, they're going to be redoing that intersection. How far up to the proponent's house that goes, I don't think it's really gonna affect the curb right there in front of his house. Um, but, you know, we also agree with Mr. D'Amico that, you know, there's no community benefit to this, this is, you know, privatizing an on-street parking space.
Okay. All right, um, seems pretty clear, but can I, I have, can we take some testimony, anyone here to speak either on behalf of the proponent or in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, Joe McEckred, City Council, Frank Baker's office, uh, we're actually in support of the driveway. Um, meeting Hill still had also supported this gentleman, um, so we wanna go on record in support.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
We have the, Mr. Chair, Secretary, we do have the letters of support from meeting Hill.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Nobody from the Mayor's Office?
Nope.
Okay, um, and, and hello?
Yes. Hi, hi, Mark.
Is, is this someone who wants to speak on the project?
Yes, yes, my name is Clovis, I'm, I'm John's nephew, I'm the one who helped him, uh, you know, with all the project and the application. I thought you guys couldn't hear me, but, uh, just to help out on the explanation on the pro, plan, we are proposing one parking space, uh, due to the fact that, um, parking will be very hard on that street, on that corner, uh, after the dot-block project is completed, and knowing that my uncle is soon to be pretty much getting to, uh, senior age, and we would thought that it would be good for him to have a parking space so he could have just come in, because once the project's done, you know, how the, uh, parking in that area will be very difficult. And we also had the abutters meeting, we had no objection, we also had the support from the Hancock, uh, Meeting Association, um, and, uh, they were supposed to sending a letter of support to you guys, I'm not sure if they actually did it, but, um, we, we, so far, we had found no objection to the project and, but support to the project, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, is there a, anybody else to speak, uh, either in support or in opposition? Uh, it, it has been the practice of this board, uh, not to grant relief, uh, when there is no net gain, and the parking is just, uh, it's just a question of privatizing, uh, privatizing existing spaces, so, given that, can I have a motion, please?
I, I'll make a motion to deny, I think the front yard parking, um, is just something that we shouldn't allow in this area.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion denied.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-two-five-two-nine-five-zero-twenty-two High Street. This is seeking to raise the existing structure and erect a new residential building with fifteen units and fifty parking spaces.
Hey, before you.
Violation Article fifty-five, section sixty-five dash four-one. Off-street parking is insufficient. Can we please mute the other?
Uh, I'm just, I'm gonna recuse myself from this, so this person might wanna mute it, defer it.
Uh, we have to.
They're gonna have to.
We're gonna have to. We don't have, we don't have a full board with, uh, with your recusal, so can I have a motion to defer?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Make a motion to defer. I'll second, Eric.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, to the applicant, I'm sorry, uh, but given that, uh, with Mr. Ruggiero's recusal, it's a four-member board, we don't have, uh, a sufficient number of members to hear the case. So, uh, can, can I have another date, Mr.?
I'll have a date of February eighth at twelve-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA, sorry, one-two seconds in. He's BOA one-two-five-nine-two-zero-two-five-fifty-five-to-five-sixty-one Metropolitan Avenue. This erected three-story, twenty-one dwelling unit with twenty-one off-street parking spaces. Subdivide the existing parcel into two parcels. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section twelve, excessive height. Article sixty-nine, section twelve, front yard setback. Article sixty-nine, section eleven, residential use on the first story is sufficient. Article sixty-nine, section twenty-nine, insufficient parking. Article sixty-nine, section twenty-nine, insufficient loading area. And Article sixty-nine, section twenty-nine, off-street parking loading requirement. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Fugini, ten-fourth room, Grainte, on behalf of the applicant. So as Mr. Fortune stated, five-five-five Metropolitan Ave. The zoning in this neighborhood is neighborhood shopping one. The lot size is twenty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-six square feet. Uh, for context, this property is loading, located to the rear of a shopping center that affronts High Park Avenue. It's a mall, a strip mall, and there's a supermarket, a CVS, Dunkin' Donuts, T-Mobile, Bank of America, a shoe store, shoe, shoe store and a hair salon. The proposal is to build a three-story building with twenty-one condominium units, uh, twenty-one off-street parking spaces and twenty-one bike spaces and a dedicated bike room. The proposal went through an Article eighty process and was approved by the BPDA Board on July fifteenth. The design that you'll see is a result of the Article eighty process. They wanted something that looked, uh, less commercial in nature. To address the violations, the height allowed in NS one district is thirty-five, we're thirty-six point six, uh, feet. Front yard is ten, we're at six point five. That was a result of the BPDA design review. Residential on the first floor, where it was in the rear of a commercial district. They wanted to keep this building residential. Parking in High Park is two spaces per dwelling unit. We're, we're providing one, supplying one space per dwelling unit. In the parking design, again, that was a, um, manufacturing by the BPDA design. As far as the unit mixes, there is, as I stated, there's twenty-one total units. Sixteen two-bedrooms, they average nine-hundred and sixty-five to thirteen-hundred square feet. Five three-bedrooms, they average eleven-hundred and thirty-three square feet. As I stated, this went through a complete, uh, complete Article eighty process and will actually be one of the first significant condominium proposals in High Park. As part of this proposal, we'll be redoing the curb on Metropolitan Ave. There will be a blue bike station installed. We're additionally, uh, building a pedestrian pathway to connect Metropolitan Ave uh, in the neighboring streets to High Park Ave and to the shopping center, High Park Ave for transportation. It's a really long block. It's approximately a quarter of a mile. And by providing this pedestrian, uh, access, it'll allow the residential neighborhood to, um, you know, go shopping and, and get their way to Forest Hills and, and places beyond. Um, and that's really it. And as part of this, there's also additionally, uh, three affordable units, and there's gonna be a cash contribution of approximately thirty thousand dollars to the BPDA to do site and street improvements, uh, in the area, not part of this project, but adjacent to it.
Okay, Mr. Fugini, a few questions. Um, are these rentals or condos?
Uh, Mr. Chair, these are condominiums.
Okay, and, um, you, you, twenty-one units, I think, I didn't quite hear, what is, what are the number of affordable units?
So there will be three affordable units associated with this proposal.
Okay, um, and the violations that you, um, mentioned include height, but it sounds like what, it's about a foot, foot and a half?
Exactly, minimal.
Okay, and setbacks, which also seem relatively minimal. The, what, uh, talk again about the parking.
So, um, the parking is to the rear of the building, so we worked with the BPDA. Um, where the, where it's located, they wanted us to install a blue bike station uh, and commit it one-to-one parking, which is similar to what the NS two neighborhoods in High Park do. Um, so that was where that all came about.
And, I mean, and given that it's located in the, you know, the larger context of the shopping mall, I assume that spillover what could potentially happen in the commercial parking lot?
And it would be well, that's a very good point. It would be well absorbed. The same, um, person who owns the strip mall owns this currently. This will be a subdivision. And the other thing that, um, Mr. Ehrlich, when we went through the process, the neighbors on Metropolitan Ave liked the fact that this, um, residential building will buffer them from, uh, deliveries and things like that to take place in the rear of that strip mall.
Okay, uh, are there roof decks as part of the building?
There is not.
Okay, uh, and, um, there was one other question that I had, which is now escaping me. Uh, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Uh, uh, plans look good. I think, you know, the scale of Metropolitan is lower. It seems to be single families. But I think at this transitional moment, I think it's, it's a, a nice move. And, and I think the landscape, um, shown on the plans is actually quite successful in, in buffering this and the, the rear of the strip mall. And I think the pedestrian path connection, uh, is, should be a welcome, uh, for the community. So I, I think it looks pretty good. I don't have any specific questions about the proposal. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fugini, I remember what I was, uh, is there handicap? Are there any handicap access units?
Uh, there are, uh, yes, Mr. Ehrlich, there are.
Okay, all right, any questions on the board? Okay, can we take testimony? Anybody here to speak in favor of the project?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office will be deferring to the board's judgment for this proposal. Um, this project was approved by the BPDA on July fifteenth. The applicants held a butter's meetings in addition to the BPDA Article eighty review process. Um, our office has received one letter of opposition from an immediate abutter, um, along with a letter of non-opposition from the High Park Neighborhood Association and several letters of support, which have all been sent to the board for review. Thank you.
Okay, do, do you know what the letter of opposition is based on?
The letter of opposition is based on, um, traffic flow, um, along with them just feeling like it's a violation to the single-family homes that are in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we have letters of support and opposition in the mayor's office. That's the opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jordan Freya is here from Councilor Royal's office. We just wanna go on the record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Anybody to speak in opposition? No, um, Madam Ambassador, no, no, no other hands at all, right?
No, sir.
All right, then can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with, uh, BPDA design review.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one-one-nine-zero-four-four-two-seven-fifty-seven Center Street. There is a companion case for building code BOA one-one-nine-zero-seven-five-four-seven-fifty-seven Center Street. This is a change of art to correct the restaurant use, restaurant with takeout, and also install a walk-up window. The violation is Article fifty-five, section sixteen, restaurant with takeout use is conditional. For the building code, the two-forty-eight CMR ten-point-ten plumbing fixtures. This application is proposing to eliminate the existing plumbing fixtures open to the public for workers' use only. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair and board members. This is Dave Krumsek, uh, for, uh, the petitioner. Uh, One Boston Place, Suite twenty-six-hundred, Boston, MS.
Um, can you tell, can you tell us, uh, what you're proposing, please?
Sure, uh, the, uh, Mr. Chair, these are two petitions, uh, for relief advanced by Six Real T L C doing businesses Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, relative to renovation work performed at the Dunkin' Donuts stores uh, my client operates at seven-fifty-seventh Center Street. Uh, petitions are twofold. Uh, the first is, uh, change of use from restaurant to restaurant with takeout. And the second is a change of occupancy from, uh, restaurant to restaurant with takeout, which, uh, also involves a, the installation of a takeout window and the removal of, uh, patron restaurants. Uh, this is, by the way, this is a, uh, traditionally a walk-up store. It's not a drive-through. And just briefly in background, petitioner has owned and operated its Dunkin' Donuts franchise at this location, seven-fifty-seventh Center Street, JP, for over forty years. Uh, my client's been in good standing with the franchisor and the city throughout its tenure and has been a good neighbor, uh, to the residence and commercial business of JP, JP community. Uh, in two thousand twenty.
Can I interrupt you for a, one, one moment? This, this is the Dunkin' Donuts across from the Forest Station?
Uh, yes.
Um, I'm a little confused. I mean, I've been there many times. I've had many cups of coffee from there. Uh, and it, I mean, it's a Dunkin' Donuts. It always has takeout. How is that?
Well, that's what I was getting to, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is news to my client, too. Uh, so, uh, yeah, they did, they did, they, they, they didn't realize there was a zoning issue relative to takeout. They, it was, I guess it was never, um, a takeout business there. It was just a restaurant business, so that was kind of the issue. So they went in there, uh, in two thousand twenty, they, they, they commenced a substantial renovation of the store. As, you know, its decor and systems are outdated and it was pretty tired. Uh, and it was needing upgraded. This is from both an aesthetic and business perspective. And these were also renovations that were designed to be, uh, current franchise standards. As you probably know, these franchises require upgrades periodically to stay up with, uh, stay in, you know, in constant, you know, appeal.
No, no, I, I, I understand the issue of upgrades and, and design changes. I'm just a little surprised. I mean, how can a Dunkin' Donuts not be a takeout?
I understand, uh, it's, yeah, it was, it was, like I said, uh, Mr. Chair, it was, it was news to my client. They, they didn't realize this.
All right, well, anyway, anyway, so, so essentially what we're, what you're suggesting is legalizing a, an existing condition?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then my other question is, uh, what is, uh, talk about this issue of plumbing fixtures open to the public for workers' use only.
Yeah, yeah, that's, well, that's, that's part of it. When they were doing the, uh, when they were doing the renovations, it was in the context, the pandemic hit right after they started. And they decided that, you know, out of safe, you know, social distancing and safety concerns, that it might be better to have a takeout window, just make, go straight, uh, uh, takeout compared, you know, as opposed to, you know, typical Dunkin' Donuts have a, you know, handful of, uh, tables and chairs in the interior. So they decided just make it completely takeout so that people wouldn't have to walk into the store out of the concerns. This was, again, in context, this was the height of the, the pandemic scare in, in March of two thousand twenty, April of two thousand twenty, so they were making these renovations at that time. And they decided to make the change, and they didn't realize that that would trigger any kind of zoning issues. They were unaware, uh, that, that, that the, the property was not, you know, properly zoned for, uh, or, or permitted, I should say, for, uh, takeout operations. So that's really what happened. So they, they kind of started doing the renovations, and then they realized that after the fact, they were put on notice by A I S D, and that led to these petitions to, to correct everything. So that's, that's why we're here. The renovation work has been completed, you know, again, because the petitioner didn't realize that the relief was needed beforehand. So they were acting in good faith and really trying to do something that was beneficial, you know, given the, the pandemic issues, uh, so they were, but they were just not aware of the requirements needed for the change.
Okay, okay. So we're, you're, we're, you're not, we're not being asked to approve any new renovations. It's a question of legalizing the existing occupancy and use, correct?
Correct. It's a, it's a, it's a, there's two, there's two pieces to it. A change of use from restaurant to restaurant with takeout, and also a change of occupancy from restaurant to restaurant with takeout. And the second piece involves this, this takeout window that they put in, thinking this was, and people were gonna be more comfortable just walking up to the takeout window rather than coming to the store.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. You made it clear. And, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the plumbing issue connected to the pandemic. Uh, sadly, uh, the, those issues are not, uh, we're not done with them. But, uh, I understand, um, you know, that your point. Okay, let's move forward. Uh, Mr. Robinson, uh, how are the plans?
Plans are good, no question. I think the plumbing change, I, I understand the sort of nuances of it, and I, I don't see an issue. They're basically just getting rid of the public bathrooms and providing a single employee-only bathroom because there's no longer seats inside. So I think that makes sense, and I understand why it's triggering it due to square footage and, and occupancy load. So no issues on that, um, in terms of the building code, and no questions on the other part of the.
Okay, any questions, any questions on the board? Anyone, anyone here to speak on behalf of the proposal?
Mr. Chair, do we wanna do the building code? Did I miss that?
Uh, uh, yeah, I think there's just a question. I mean, uh, Mr. Robinson, I mean, can we just do a motion to?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the building code relief, uh, required.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, and, uh, just now to public testimony, anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Caballero here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, there were some community concerns raised at the abutter's meeting that I facilitated back on September ninth. Uh, but all in all, this proposal had received support from the Jamaica Plain Association, oh, sorry, the Jamaica Pond Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. At this time, the mayor's office would like to respectfully defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment. But is there any other elected officials that would like to speak?
Okay, is there, uh, anyone, you know, non-elected officials, any raised hands at all, Madam Ambassador?
No, sir.
Okay, I think this is pretty straightforward. Uh, I have drunk a lot of coffee at that store and hope a lot more. So, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-two-three-seven-zero-seven-three-thirty-eight-fifty-Washington Street. This is a change of argument from six residential units and six parking spaces to six residential units and five covered parking spaces. Violation Article nine, section one, reconstruction extension of a non-performing building. Article nine, section two, a non-performing use change. And Article thirty-three, section sixteen, air rights applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street on behalf of the applicant. As mentioned this morning, we're seeking to change the occupancy from six residential units and six parking spaces to six residential units and five parking spaces. Uh, as you can see, this building is already constructed. Uh, this, this project, as six units and six parking spaces, was approved by this board back on June twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen. Uh, we then went through the required design review process with the BPDA, and the suggestion was made to reconfigure the parking to improve the design and functionality of the parking spaces, uh, which ultimately led to the reduction of one parking space. A permit then issued upon the plan showing six units and five parking spaces. And, uh, in trying to finalize the occupancy, it was realized that the six and six was still on record. Uh, so we're seeking just the reduction of one parking space, which triggered the mentioned violations. There are no other changes to the plan other than the parking. You can see in the rear, there, there are three parking spaces as opposed to four, and they are fully enclosed in the rear where it was once, uh, a little bit open, open air in the rear. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions from the board.
All right, so did you come back for board final arbiter, um, when it got changed from six to five?
We did not, Mr. Chair. The, the plans approved by the BPDA were submitted to ISD, and then the permit, uh, issued. Uh, so it was a bit of an oversight to not come back for board final arbiter. Uh, but it was discovered when we tried to close out the occupancy.
Okay, so, I mean, in effect, this is sort of, uh, board final arbiter after the fact, uh, is what you're looking at. Okay.
That, yes, that's fair to say, Mr. Chair.
All right, uh, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, drawings are fine. No questions, um, on the proposed change.
Okay, any questions on the board? Anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent? Anyone here to speak at all?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, well, this is a pretty, uh, I can see why. This is pretty straightforward. Uh, can I have a motion then?
A motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-two-five-two-nine-five-zero-twenty-two High Street. Calling a next case, calling DOA 1256886, 96 Sheridan Street. This is a change of occupancy in existing two-family building with three dwelling units to a three-family dwelling with new fire sprinkler and fire alarm. The violation is Article Fifty-Five, Section Fifty-Five dash forty, parking is insufficient. Article Fifty-Five, Section Fifty-Five ninety-nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article Fifty-Five, Section Twelve, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article Fifty-Five, Section Nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, Kyle Smith of KDS Law, business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston Beck Bay. I also have the project architect on the line with me as well.
Okay, Mr. Smith, can you describe how this is going to change from a two to a three?
Yes, sir. So we essentially are trying to perfect and legalize a pre-existing, non-legal, non-identified third unit, which is on the first floor of the building. Their elevations are that basically the first floor is entirely exposed, both from front and also from rear. So we have for decades now a three-unit building for which there is a legally identified unit on the second and third floor. The first-floor unit has not been legal or identified with the city. So we essentially have a pre-existing condition for which we are trying to then legalize it. There is no current parking on off-street on the parcel. There is not proposed to be. There's normally one space required per unit, but we're trying to bring one more unit into existence and once more, one more required space, which we do not have, hence the violation. We have a relatively small lot size. We have a building with a relatively, you know, narrow footprint. So we have an FAR violation, and we also have a usable open space violation, which arguably is pre-existing. The proponent and applicant understands and appreciates that upzoning from a two-to-three family requires sprinkling. We do have architect-proposed sprinkler plans, which have also been submitted to the city, and the intent is to bring the building up into sprinkler compliance.
Beyond the sprinkler and fire alarm work, is there any proposed work?
Uh, no, sir. The intent is to maintain everything exactly as it has been. It's been presented that way through the entirety of community process, and we have, you know, arguably unanimous or overwhelming support for the upzoning based upon the fact that the entire neighborhood has known this to be a three-family for decades now.
And are these three rental units, condo units, what are they?
Um, they are currently maintained as rental once this is perfected. I guess the owner would reserve the right to turn them into condos later, but they are currently maintained as a rental property.
So the, it's an absentee owner, the owner doesn't live there, I assume?
The owner does not live there, sir. He does live locally to the Boston area, but not there, sir.
Okay, so is, and is part of what triggered this the thought of potentially transforming into condos?
Uh, I don't think so, sir. My client purchased the property. It was discovered in the analysis for the purchase that this was a illegal unit.
Okay.
So we're trying to, you know, do our due diligence and perfect it.
Okay, so, and how is, how is it currently taxed as two or three?
Uh, currently taxed as a three, sir.
Okay, and the utilities are set up for three units?
Uh, I will let the architect confirm, but I believe so, yes, sir.
I believe it is separately metered for each unit.
For each of the three, so three separate meters?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, well, this seems also relatively straightforward. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Uh, drawings are good, no questions. It, it does have a little bit of a hill, but it, it makes perfect sense, and there, there is a separate access for utilities off the rear that is, seems to be segregated from the, the unit as it is. So no questions on the proposal.
Okay, is there anyone here to, and the other conditions, Mr. Smith, that the variations are existing conditions, correct?
Uh, yes, sir, for all of them, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, with the, with the MFR, if we're legalizing that square footage, we would be usurping the nonconformity, but yes.
I understand. That's why I asked if there was any additional work. If there isn't, then it's existing conditions. Okay, anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Aye, yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Caballero here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant completed the community process with no opposition from Director Butters. Back on July 21st, at the JPNC's monthly civic association meeting, they approved this proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
And affirm, Mr. Chair, it is a three-family as far as the taxing department is concerned.
Okay, that's what I asked, okay.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Calling a last case, 9:30, calling DOA 1257933, 235 Baker Street. This is an installation of a pylon sign for Catholic Memorial, 108 inches by 26, 26 inches, which was approved by the BPDA. The violation is Article Fifty-Six, Section Thirty-Eight, freestanding signs are used as conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Catholic Memorial, Brian Palm, 235 Baker Street, West Roxbury, Massachusetts.
Okay, please tell us about your proposal.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have a freestanding sign that we are looking for a waiver on, approximately nine-foot tall, four-sided sign that will go out in a recently redone landscaped area in the main entrance area of the school. You can see by that picture that's scrolling by right now. We, in addition to continuing to do some work from an aesthetic perspective on our two main side streets there, Brother Han Way and along Baker Street, that's the view that you get coming into the school, which is quite a distance. It's a confusing, where do I enter into the school process? And so by doing this, just not only for the, where to do this and enter the school, but also for the safety of the school, so that we have visitors to the school coming through one main entrance area, we feel strongly that having this beacon that's off the front of the building there just by a little bit will, will serve a number of different important values for the school. So we are seeking a waiver to install, have this sign installed. We were in front of the Neighborhood West Roxbury Committee Group back in late October and received approval from that group at that time.
Okay, sorry for not, so I've been waiting for the renderings of the sign itself. So we're talking about that sort of, that little, that tower there?
Yep, right there.
Okay, what are the dimensions on the tower?
Uh, it's a nine foot one, I believe is the number on it, and tall, and it is, I don't have the exact numbers, it's about a two foot wide on all sides.
Twenty-six inches, twenty-six inches square.
Twenty-six inches.
Twenty-six inches square by nine foot high.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. Can you go, can you go back one slide to the, so we can see it in context? Okay, all right, Mr. Robinson, any thoughts?
Uh, looks good to me. I do have the approved BPDA stamp drawings that they've reviewed this, so no questions from me.
Any questions in the board? Anyone here to speak on behalf of the proposal?
Reporting, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, to play the going record. Well, the applicant went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council back in late October, like Brian mentioned. He received their full support. In addition, we also received a few phone calls from neighbors who were fully supportive. At this time, I'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of the City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Councilor Flaherty, being a proud graduate of Boston College High School, would very much like to go on record as support.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
No second, that motion.
Uh, oh, yeah, no need for BPDA reviews, and they've already signed off on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that's the, move forward into the 11 o'clock hearings.
Mr. Chair, would you like to make a comment? Be on the five-member board before I go to 11 o'clock?
Yes, we will do. That's an excellent idea, Mr. Fortune. Just a reminder to any of the applicants who are recently joining us, today we are a five-member board, which means you need a unanimous vote for a motion to carry. We're ordinarily a seven-member board, and given that if an applicant would choose not to be heard today, you can ask for a defer, administrative deferral, which will be automatically granted. So I would just, every applicant has that choice to either go forward or to ask for the deferral.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will call the 11 o'clock hearing. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11 o'clock? If you give me the address first, if you are either deferring or withdrawing 11 o'clock. Hearing done, I call the first case, calling DOA 12457607 Putnam Street. This is to add a third dwelling unit on the top of an existing two-family structure, creating a three-family building within the existing building's footprint. We renovate an existing two floors, rebuild exterior rear deck. The violation is Article Fifty-Three, Section Eight, three-family is a forbidden use in a 2F 2000 sub-district. Article Fifty-Three, Section Fifty-Six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article Fifty-Three, Section Nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article Fifty-Three, Section Nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article Fifty-Three, Section Nine, the building has excessive stories. Article Fifty-Three, Section Nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article Fifty-Three, Section Nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article Fifty-Three, Section Nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Joshua Osvido. My address is 256 Marion Street, East Boston, Mass. I'm-
Can you tell, can you please describe your proposal?
Yes, so what I'm proposing to do is to add a floor on the two-family building in the middle of the, the picture on the left to make it into a three-unit building as shown on the, the picture on the right. I also plan on renovating the existing two floors. They haven't really seen any type of real renovations, all about the 50s, 60s. I also have my architect on the line, too, David Chor, that might be able to help with any other, with any question that come up as well.
Thank you, Joshua. Thank you, members of the board, or, or hearing this case. I'm David Chor, architect, working on behalf of Mr. Joshua Sevedo.
Okay, tell us, so what are, what are the size of the current units and what will be the size of the third unit?
Okay, the current unit is approximately 1,100 square feet, and we're, we're planning to add another 1,100 square feet to the third floor. The intention to, yes, sir.
You're maintaining the same footprint, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and are these condos or rentals currently?
Rentals.
They're rentals, and they will stay that way?
Yeah, I have no plans in the, you know, the near future to try to convert to condos. I plan on keeping it, own it since 2009.
Okay, now, the rendering that was shown, it seems like your surrounding buildings are already at a higher elevation, and you're bringing yours up to that height, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The, the building on the left has been there since it was first built, it's a three-unit, it looks like four because of the, the slope of Putnam Street, and then the, the building on the, the right side is a, a newer structure that just went up within the last year or two.
Okay, so those all must have gotten, had gotten, if, if you got a height violation, then those buildings must have gotten variances as well, right?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so walk me through the, the violations, please.
Yeah, so, Section Nine, lot area is insufficient. It's a, the zone for 2F 2000. The lot size is 1,425 square feet, so that's an existing non-conforming condition, sir. The, the height is excessive, it's not the height of the building of 35 feet, but rather it's the fact that we are adding another level to the three stories, it's not, it's no longer 2.5, but we are maintaining the 35 feet, trying to keep it under the 35 feet. The front yard is insufficient, it's an existing non-conforming condition. The side yard is insufficient, but however, there is a, a, a rather wide, three-foot, exceeding three foot two inches width on the left side for egress from the back. The rear yard is insufficient, but that's also not conforming. We're keeping to the existing footprint of what is shown on the plot plan and the, again, the off-street parking. Currently, there are no off-street parking, and it's a non-conforming condition. And lastly, it's floor area ratio, we're going to go from, we're going to go to above 2.1 FAR. So those are the violations that, that the ISD cited.
Okay, and I see there's a roof, a proposed roof deck?
Yes, sir.
All right, is, is the height that you are, that you are telling the board include the, the height of the roof deck or, or just the top of the, the third floor?
Uh, it would include the top of the roof deck. If you look at the top of the roof, it's 34 inches, and if we're adding, you know, within five-foot height, we're going to keep to, we're going to, to that 35 foot, less than 35 foot.
Okay, and the access to the roof deck is dedicated to the third floor unit or, or to all three units?
Uh, this point to all three units, I had asked at the, like, the community meetings, or the Eagle Hill meetings, whether that was an issue or whether people preferred just the third floor, and they didn't have any input or any suggestion one way or the other.
Okay, and the access is through the rear stairwell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Uh, plans are good. The, the build, as you, you said, the, the building fits in in the context with the adjacent buildings. I think the ad is, is fine, no, no questions on that. And there, there is no head house or rear access, as you mentioned as well. That's through sort of the existing, I guess, back stairs that will be expanded as well. So no questions on the proposal. I think it fits in fine.
Okay, any questions in the board? Uh, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Some background information regarding the community process led by ONS. No concerns were raised at the abutters meeting, and the applicant went to the Eagle Hill Civic Association and received their support as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, well, in the absence of any further testimony, can I have a motion, please?
Motion, motion approved with a BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, members.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 1254663, 22 Prospect Street. This is a peremptive as a three-family dwelling. Renovate the existing three-family dwelling, propose a new first and second floor deck, roof deck, extend living space to the basement. Violation is Article 62, Section 25, obstruction restrictions. Article 62, Section Eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 62, Section Eight, the building has excessive speed, and Article 62, Section Eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Rob Gattnick for 22 Prospect LLC.
Okay, Mr. Gattnick, can you tell us about your proposal?
Yes, we are taking this three-unit building in Charlestown, at 22 Prospect Street, and doing a renovation, converting it into three condominiums. The proposal included side decks, a roof deck, and interior reconfiguration.
Okay, so the, the roof deck is new and the side decks are new?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's go, let's go through this piece by piece. The first unit, you're proposing to extend living space to the basement?
Um, there's currently access that combined the first floor to the basement, but we are proposing to remove the rear stair, which was the current access, from the first floor into the lower level, and we're extending the main stair down into the lower level. There was a rear stair that went from the lower level to the roof, and we're proposing to extend the main stair, one stair, one staircase into the lower level, and one staircase to a relocated head house at the roof. So we're basically just stacking the stairs in the existing stairwell and removing the rear stair altogether.
Okay, so let's, let's stick with one thing at a time with the, with the basement. So what, what has been the use of the basement until now?
It was, a portion of it was utility space, and the other portion of it was like a living, living space- like a living, living space that was combined with the first floor, to the, to the rear of the, in the L, basically.
But that, the living space was accessed by all three units, by the singular staircase, correct?
Effectively, it could have been accessed by the other units, but the rear stair wasn't really an active use.
Okay, I know, but I mean, if you're extending living space in one unit on the ground floor to the basement, then you have to have an interior staircase that is dedicated solely for that use.
Well, that's, in the redesign, yes, that's exactly how it worked. The current design is not how that would.
Okay, well, let's talk about the basement. What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Floor-to-ceiling height existing is seven feet approximately.
Okay, and do you intend to increase that? Because if it's.
Yeah, we're increasing it to eight feet, but we're going down.
You're, you're excavating to get that extra floor?
We're excavating to put in a new slab, and we'll be down at eight, we'll be at eight feet when we're finished, finished floor to finished ceiling.
All right, so how does that, what does that do? Our concern in living space in the basement is natural light and sort of the avoiding the dungeon-like qualities. What's the floor to grade, what will be finished floor, what will be the floor to grade height?
Floor to grade is, will be, will be four feet.
Four feet, okay. And is, and will there be a bedroom in this new living space?
There's a, one bedroom, one office. So the bedroom is to the rear, in the back of the L with two windows. And then there's an office in the forward section, the bathroom, the laundry area.
And what are, and are there, I, I'm having trouble seeing on my screen the, the details. Are there windows in the bedroom?
A lot, looking out into the patio area along the side of the building, yeah.
And what's the floor?
There's windows along that entire wall of the L, and then there's two windows in that room towards the front.
And what will be the, once you excavate, what will be the floor to sill height of the window?
The floor to sill height will be at 44.
44 inches, okay. All right, and now let's, let's talk a little bit about the, the new roof deck. Is that accessible by all three units or just the top?
Exclusive to the third unit, third floor unit.
And how will it be accessed?
The main stair will be extended up to the roof into the relocated headhouse. The headhouse existing now is on the L, and we're looking to move the headhouse, get rid of the old one.
Is there an elevation that shows that?
What's that?
Do you have a, is there a, is there an elevation or a rendering that shows the headhouse in the rear?
I can share a different file.
No, 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 we have to use our, what's on the screen.
Okay. There is not. The plan that I submitted to ISD originally had all of that information on it.
I have a, I have a, I have a, seem to have a different set of plans.
Yeah, two, two plans.
In front of me, there is a headhouse shown, which I think is, we have, probably will have an issue of, I guess, but toward the front side of, of the building, based on the plans I am looking at. I guess, oh, here, yeah, these are the ones, these are the ones I'm looking.
Okay, can we?
These are the, these are the ones with the more technical detail.
Roll down to, until we get to an elevation?
Yeah, there's also some 3D renderings at the back, but there, you can see them.
Okay, so, the, the, the roof deck, proposed roof deck is new, right? What was the function of the, of the headhouse existing?
The headhouse, basically, to get onto the roof. I don't, there may have been a deck there at one time, I have no idea. But the, the, the existing headhouse was on the L of the building, which is only 11 feet and a few inches wide. And it, and you exited the headhouse kind of towards the back of the, of the lot. So it was a little treacherous to try to reconfigure that, to, to create a deck back there. So we wanted to extend the main stair up to the roof, basically get rid of that headhouse, and move the headhouse on to the main portion of the building where it's
Okay, so.
20 some odd feet wide.
So the existing headhouse is gonna go as part of your proposal, right?
Exactly.
Okay, well, that, well, that gives us a, a fresh opportunity to relook at the issue of access. Okay, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are good. I just, I guess I wanted to noodle a little on the grades in the back.
Oh, there we go, that's a, that's a good, all right, now we can really see.
Yeah, but I want to check one thing, because if you see on the rear bottom, that, that's the bedroom. The windows are actually shown, but they're below grade on the lower sash, if you understand what that's going on in the drawing. But I'm trying to understand, because it does look like the site falls away in the back. And some of the other views, the windows seem to be adequate. But you said the sill of those windows will be 44 inches below grade, correct?
That's correct. They, they look out onto the patio that is inside the L of the building. And Prospect Street is a hill that runs from Monument Square down towards the Navy Yard. So as you go, where the patio is, is at a lower elevation than.
But they're still 44, because you need to excavate out.
We're going to be doing a bunch of work in the back for the groundwater recharge, reconfiguring the patio, putting in new pavers and drainage, landscaping. So we'll be able to adjust the grade accordingly and make sure that our windows are egress.
So I, so just, so I'm clear. I think, and I understand exactly, Mr. Robinson's confusion, because in this drawing, the one that we have up on the screen, it looks like the bottom of the sill of the windows is below grade. And so, and so you would need a window well in order to, to put windows in. But you're saying they look out on the patio, so is this, is this drawing an error? Is this, the, oh, the, oh, yeah.
Well, the matter of the matter, if you go to the last, I think it's the last, or second-to-last page, right there, stop on these three-dimensional views. Here, you can see a little bit better. It's a little hard to tell, but those windows then seem to be consistent with the patio height, which is a little bit of a different story. So I guess the one thing we could, if this is approved, we could mandate that that patio height, you know, make sure it meets the requirements of, yeah. But it does appear to be full height in terms of those windows. They're not sort of some other kind of condition that we typically see, so it's a little bit different.
Okay, so we've got two issues. We've got access to the roof, and we've got the windows to consider as we go forward.
No questions for me, other than those, please.
Okay, any questions in the board? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kealan Stapleton from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There is an Butters meeting held by our office on October 18th. Any concerns shown by Butters were addressed in a large support shown at the meeting. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to respectfully defer to the board. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, would you like to put forward a motion?
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to approve. I would like to see the headhouse removed. I think it's too prominent now in the front of the building, whereas before it was on the rear. So I'd like to see the headhouse removed and roof access with a hatch. And then I also will want sort of special attention in terms of a proviso that the BPD A review the grades at the rear to ensure that those are full-height windows at the rear. So I want to just point those out as provisos, but I'll make a motion to approve based on those two items.
Okay, Mr. Hampton, is that clear, what Mr. Robinson's suggesting?
I have it, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair's secretary here, I'm sorry, I did have two letters, one support, one in opposition. The opposition was the deck.
The opposition was to the deck, okay, thanks, Mr.. Okay, so Mr. Robinson has made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, the motion is carries with those provisos.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 124-5153, 19 to 23 Hudson Street. This is to remove the proviso, takeout granted to the petitioner only, change of occupancy to one restaurant with 37, 36A, takeout, I'm sorry, 36A, 12 apartments and one bubble tea, 36A, pit-out drink establishment. Violation Article 6, Section 4, other protectional conditions. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, if you're the proponent for this case, can you raise your hand or unmute yourself or send me a message in the chat? I don't remember them signing anything, Mr. Chair.
Looks like, Mr. Chen, Jim Chen?
Chen, what's her name, Chen?
Chen. You can see her on the screen. You have to unmute yourself, ma'am. You have to unmute yourself, ma'am.
Who does she on the screen ask?
Jim Chen.
Jim Chen?
Yeah.
Oh, Jim, okay, yep, he's muted. Jim, can you hear us?
She's on mute. Audio's not working.
Are we, are we, is, is the proponent Jim Chen? Mr. Fortune, is that what you were suggesting?
Well, the person who's on right now, Mr. Chair, they're trying to talk, but unfortunately, I don't think they're working.
Okay, because I'm looking.
Bonnie Tan has her hand raised, let me just see if they're here to help. Bonnie, I made a request to unmute you. Are you here to assist? Can you unmute yourself? Hi, Bonnie? Hello? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, my name is Bonnie Tan, I'm here on behalf of Jim Chen.
Okay, can you tell us, tell us what you're proposing?
We're proposing to put a bubble tea at the existing basement storage of the first-floor restaurant, and legalizing this space.
Okay, so what is it currently used, what's the space currently used for?
Currently, it was the back kitchen storage for the first-floor restaurant. So it's subdividing it and having its own coffee shop.
Okay, so, so some of the basement will still be storage and the other part will be a little tea shop?
Yeah.
Okay, and how, and how, you go, it's underground, you go down stairs from the, from the.
Outside, yeah, from the street.
Okay, and it will have a separate, separate access, or do you go into the main?
Separate access.
Okay, and there will be, and there will be takeout as part of this?
Yeah, it's takeout only.
Takeout only, okay. Are, who is the, who, who is the owner, is it Mr. Chen?
No, Jim Chen is the architect also, and he's out on a side visit this morning, so I'm feeling for.
So, so who's the owner?
Owner is Baow LLC.
Okay, and has that ownership have previous experience with takeout?
Yes.
So they know the various, the various provisions that are involved with?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The drawings are fine. I guess I have one question, as you mentioned, this is in the basement. Since you're turning this into a publicly-accessed restaurant or takeout, how are you handling accessibility to the lower level?
Um, well, Chinatown is a little bit hard, because it's pre-existing.
Because of the grades, okay.
Right, because of the grades, so I don't know, I mean, if have to be, then they will have to provide a handicap.
We don't, we don't, as a zoning board, right, so I think I just wanted to make sure that there, currently, there doesn't seem to be any accessibility. We don't, we don't grant relief for that, I just wanted to point that out, I think that's a question. So I just want to make sure the members of the board understand. No questions on the proposed scope, but there is no accessibility currently to the lower level, so.
Okay, and there is no, I assume there's no natural light, it's all below grade, right?
Uh, well, there will be a window in the front.
Yeah.
They're opening it.
Okay, so there will be light coming in through that?
Yeah, it will be the natural light at the front.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and Mr. Robinson's point is well-taken. The issue of handicap accessibility is not our purview, but I don't know whether somebody else, some other regulatory body may raise it as an issue. Okay, any questions in the board? Is there anyone, anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Mayor's Office at this time would like to defer to the board's judgment. Some background information regarding the community process. The applicant had met with the Chinatown South Cove Neighborhood Council back in August of 2019. Had recently checked back in with them, that's the extent of my notes right now.
So Connor, you said it was 2019, how come nothing's happened since then?
The applicant might be able to address that, I'm not sure if it was a backlog with, with the pandemic, if maybe they put things on hold.
Right, it was, at first, we, the client thought they don't have to go in front of a CBA, so they submitted for a permit. Took a while to, you know, get back with the pandemic, too.
Okay, okay, anybody else to speak on behalf of the proponent or in opposition?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon, Councilor of Slim Saucers. The councilor would like to vote on recording support. Thank you.
All right, and welcome back, Anna.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the typical takeout proviso, along with that we are not granting relief for accessibility, and that the proponent needs to resolve that, if needed.
And, and it should be for this applicant only?
And for this applicant only, thank you.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 125-8631, 1027 to 1029 Tremont Street. This is to change occupancy from two residential units and store to three residential units and restaurant with takeout and bar. Also erect a four-story addition with roof deck. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, G-COD applicability. Article 50, Section 11, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 11, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, once again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Matta Echel with Drago Tiscana with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of 1027, 1029 Tremont Street. Also with me is Bill Paquette from Kazanian Associates, the project architects. I do see Christians on, I don't know if you want to defer to him first for the G-COD.
Christian, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. Christian Seminale, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both the Boston Water and Sewer approval and no harm certification letter.
Very good.
Yeah, secretary here, we have those letters as well.
Okay, thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as mentioned in the description, we are seeking to change the occupancy from two residential units and a store to three residential units and a restaurant. The takeout and the bar are both incidental to the restaurant use. It will function primarily as a typical restaurant. We're also seeking to erect a one-story addition with a roof deck. So just if this project looks familiar to some of the board members, it was actually approved back in February 27th of 2018, and went through a full BPD A design review process. However, once final construction documents were submitted to inspectional services, it was discovered that the zoning approval relief had expired. So we're back here once again. It is a new project, but it is the same parameters of what was previously approved, if it does look familiar. Just to run through the floor plans, so the restaurant is proposed to be on the lower level and the first floor. The lower level would house the kitchen, serving area, and a bathroom. The upper level of the restaurant will contain the primary dining area, as well as another bathroom with 26 seats. Altogether, the restaurant will be about 1,500 square feet. The second and third floors will remain relatively the same currently. The second and third floors will remain relatively the same. Currently, there are existing two-bedroom units on both the second and third floor. There'll be some minor interior renovations to improve the functionality of the units, but overall, they'll stay the same. And then on the fourth floor, we're proposing approximately an 800-square-foot two-bedroom unit, two baths, with a study. We are also proposing a roof deck. Currently, there exists a headhouse and a small roof deck. We're proposing to bump that headhouse up one story to then access the new roof deck. I would point out, we are proposing to keep the headhouse in approximately the same position, which is about half to two-thirds of the way back away from the street, so it is not visible from the street. In terms of violations, we address the G-Cod. FAR 3.0 is allowed. We're proposing a 4.3. This is a pre-existing violation. Open space, you're required to have 50 square feet per dwelling unit. We're proposing approximately 400 with the new roof deck. We are enlarging the roof deck, so we're actually improving this previously existing violation. Rear yard, you're required to have 20 feet. We are staying within the footprint of the existing building, so we're proposing a zero outline. That is pre-existing. And finally, we're required to have one additional parking space for the additional unit. As you can see from the pictures, with the existing structure, we cannot provide any parking, so there's zero spaces. With that, I'll pause and take any questions from the board.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. You're saying that this is essentially the same proposal that came before this board some years ago, and then for a variety of reasons was delayed, but I thought you were also saying there's some changes to that proposal. Which is it?
No, this, these are the, these are the exact plans. I apologize if I misspoke, but these are the plans that were previously approved. The previous relief expired right before the pandemic started, so.
I understand that. I'm actually, to be quite candid, I'm a little bit surprised that we would have approved it with the headhouse as described.
Understood, Mr. Chairman. These are the plans that were submitted previously and went through BPDA designer view, so there are no changes to the headhouse.
They came before the ZBA?
Yes, these are the same plans that previously came before the ZBA, that's correct.
Interesting, okay. I mean, once you, once you're adding a story and you're removing the old headhouse, then there seems to be a fresh opportunity for, or an opportunity for a fresh look at how to access the roof deck, and I'm just, it's just quite a large headhouse. I don't recall it, but I'm quite surprised that we would have approved it in the form that's presented today. Okay, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Plans look good. I agree. I think the headhouse is sort of extreme. It has a window and some other space, so I think we should consider that, but I don't have any other questions about the proposal in terms of scope.
Well, maybe it's good that we're getting a second bite of the apple. Any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. This is Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held on September 20th, 2021, in which they had seven participants. They answered all questions raised by all the Butters and also do have support from two who were on the Butters meeting. We are going to be deferring to the expertise of the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Boy, where?
I am today.
Where is everybody? All right. Okay, can I have, Mr. Robinson, would you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the removal of the headhouse and access through a roof hatch.
And BPDA design review?
I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It looks pretty good to me. Mr. Hampton, do you want to see it?
And they've already done, they've already done. Jeff, you want to see it again?
We've already done it. This came, came to us back in 2018.
I think it can be approved with the, if the proponent's okay with removing of the headhouse, I think it could be approved with the removal of the headhouse and no BPDA design review.
Mr. Robinson, stop.
Is there a second?
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
I do know, I don't know if this changes your vote at all. I do believe the headhouse is required in the building, though.
Boom, because of the height?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, sorry, you're correct. I'm sorry, I did. So I will make a motion to approve with the reduction, taking like BPDA design review to reduce the size of the headhouse to be less visually intrusive.
Yeah, even, Mr. Robinson, I would agree. Even with leaving a headhouse, it could certainly be severely reduced in size.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
That's fine.
I'll, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries with that proviso.
Good luck.
Calling an ex case, calling BOA 1261313, 154 Terrace Street. This is erected 66-unit residential building with 5,404 square feet and 5,336 square feet totaling 10,940 square feet. Violation is Article 59, Section 19. Maximum floor-to-air ratio allowed, Article 59, Section 19. Maximum building height allowed, Article 59, Section 19. The minimum rear yard required, Article 59, Section 37. R Street parking is insufficient, and Article 59, Section 18, multi-family use is prohibited. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Quokky, and Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, on behalf, here on behalf of and with the proponent, Wynn Development. Phil Cohen, who's the representative of Wynn, is with us. Also with me is project architect Jeff Sargis from TAT. Mr. Chair, if I may, just to give you a brief summary of this project, take you to the site. You'll see in the second slide the property site at 154 Terrace Street in the aerial photograph on the presentation. I believe that's the ZBA or the ISD submission you're looking at now. But in any case, this is the second and final phase of Wynn's Pickle Dyson development on Terrace Street in Mission Hill, which is the back of the hill. Terrace Street is in a local industrial zone that is becoming more residential and pedestrian and feel by design through transportation planning and neighborhood objectives. The property site is immediately next to the first phase that Wynn developed in 2011 or provided in 2011. That is a 62-unit residential building at six stories. And what we are looking to do is to activate the vacant parking lot, which is immediately next to it. Was the part of the original Pickle Dyson factory site, as you'll see there on the left. I will note, in the back of the site is the southwest corridor, Columbus Ave, which is divided by Amtrak railroad tracks. On the other side is a very steep change in grade that goes up to Parker Street, which is the residential, part of the residential neighborhood. The proposal is to develop a six-story building of homeownership. The first phase of Pickle Dyson was a mix of mostly rental, mostly homeowner, and some homeownership, but also mostly affordable. And this is to provide, to finish the mixed-income community with 64 units of residential homeownership. Good-sized units, no studios, all one and two-bedroom units. We have 18 two-bedroom units and 48 one-bedroom units. And the two-bedroom units average around 1,000 square feet, and the one-bedrooms average around 650, so this is not a compact program. We have 27 parking spaces on the main level and a structured garage. One of the things, Mr. Chair, we introduced with this project, which is a bit unique as well, is some open space between the existing factory building in Phase 1 and our building, a 25-foot relief zone by 30 for a pocket park. And that's meant to activate the front of Terrace Street and break up the street wall. We also have, because this is homeownership, we have a roof deck program on the top, and that's actually shown, I don't know if you have the presentation in addition to this, but we do have that rendered. And there are six pods, and the intent of that, and you'll see that just in the gray hash of the box of what you're looking at now, is to provide small, private, functioning pods rather than one large roof deck, so that in this post-COVID world, unit owners can sign up and utilize that space. And that's accessed by the elevator override and by a second beam upstairs, mitigated by the fact that it is at the back of the building and over the tracks and further looking towards the southwest corridor and away from the residential neighborhood. For the zoning, this was read into the record. Article 59, we're in a local industrial area. We need a use variance for that in order to provide the largest scale of much-needed homeownership in Mission Hill. And a height variance, which is also mitigated by that major change in grade as you're looking down at us. Zoning requires 40, we're 8110. The building to the right of us, which is the Phase 1, is about 72 feet in height. And then we need a rear yard variance. We're close to the line, but off the rear line is the railroad tracks, again, the southwest corridor of Columbus Ave. Rear yard's required is 15, and we're at the rear yard. And with that, Mr. Chair, I come to the conference.
You're the first one today, Joe. So can you walk us through again the number of, the breakdown of the units in terms of number of bedrooms and?
Yeah, and I apologize if you, I know that you guys usually have two presentations. This is the ISD submission you're showing now. And we had submitted the presentation. This is an Article 80, Large Project Review, so yeah, here you are. And so if you look at page 5, Adam's address, that's, there you go. So again, 48 one-bedroom units and 18 two-bedroom units for a total of 66. And the one-bedroom units range between 630 up to 670 square feet. The two-bedroom units are 970 to 1,025 square feet. And again, this is homeownership, so we think.
So Mr. Han, I'm curious, this, I mean, when we see these kind of, you know, larger multi-unit projects and we see a mix of one, two, and three bedroom, we usually don't see quite so many at the one-bedroom end. What's the, what's the demographics that this is being pitched to?
So if, you know, in Mission Hill, you know, especially for condos, that from a market standpoint or price per square foot, oftentimes, three bedrooms are very expensive. The demographics show that, you know, there is for couples, also for single people, but also those two-unit buildings that allows people enough room also to work from home, even in the one-bedroom units. And it's interesting, we process this really closely with the Neighborhood Housing Services Group, which knows its housing dynamics pretty well. And to your point, we actually started with smaller units, and this was the level that we ended up at. Especially as we begin to see homeownership in Mission Hill. As you know, Mr. Chair, there's an overabundance of rental housing in Mission Hill, but not a lot of homeownership in the buildings. There is homeownership in, in large buildings, I should say. And so we also want something that is going to be successful, and we feel that this hits that market demographics.
So I, I mean, you know, obviously, it's not geared towards families or large families. And I understand, my concern is that it could lend itself to some speculative development. People buy the units and then rent them, you rent them out, and there's a high degree of turnover and churn. And I'm wondering whether, you know, there have been other projects where there have been deep restrictions and measures put in the covenants to try to stop that from happening. Is that, has that been considered here?
Yes, so as part of the Article 80 process, we worked really hard with the neighborhood, and we have a binding MOU with the neighborhood. And obviously, they can speak for themselves. But it requires certain benchmarks, and also requires that those benchmarks be put into, you know, the condominium documents, but also at certain points, right? And that is, and restrictions on long-term, short-term rentals, excuse me. Restrictions on the percentage of units that can be rented anytime. And benchmarks for exceeding up to 75, getting up to 75% of owner occupancy. So I would say one thing that, you know, Wynn Development took a risk on this project. The first phase had been going on for quite some time, and they jumped in in 2008 and delivered on the first phase. And so the dialogue we have with the community on this is very important, and it's something that was, you know, put in writing from an MOU standpoint.
And what about the issue of affordability? I think you already mentioned that, but could you say that again?
Yeah, so the first phase, 62 units, 43 of which was affordable. And then the city had said, when you do the second phase, and Article 80 had approved project for the second phase, but they didn't proceed with it, here we are, right? They wanted to see more of a mix. The neighborhood wanted to see homeownership. So we have, we have three onsite IDP units, and then we have a contribution that is part of the community and the Article 80 process of $1.2 million to create affordable homeownership in Mission Hill. And that was part of our Article 80 approval as well. So the idea is a little bit of a different bird, you know?
So you're not hitting the 13% or any of the target you're making up for it by a financial contribution?
Yeah, well, so this is a notice of project change under Article 80.
Just yes, yeah, just yes or no? Yeah, okay.
Yes, correct, correct. As a standalone, if you were to look at this on its own, correct.
All right. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are fine. No real questions on the drawings themselves. I think that, you know, I guess I'm, you know, the Pickle Factory building was, is obviously an existing beautiful brick building. I guess I'm wondering, and I just went through Article 80 Large Project, so I assume there was attention paid, but you know, from the Columbus Ave side, which is the non-street side, I'm a little bit worried we're sort of getting the backside of the building. So I think hopefully when this goes through, it's kind of final, if it's approved, there is some care taken on the rear of the building. But in terms of the scope and size, I don't have any questions for the proponent on that.
Mr. Secretary here, I just wanted to put, Bob D'Amico has spoken on this. I'll put it into the record, please. Regarding 154 Terrace Street to improve simultaneous access and egress to the parking location, BTD would like to suggest a curb cut to be expanded to 12 feet. Since the garage exit exists on the rear of the sidewalk, BTD would like to request an audiovisual safety measure to allow persons with disabilities to be aware of the exiting vehicle.
What is the current dimension of the curb cut?
10.
Jeff Sargis, can you speak to that?
Okay.
It's 15 feet existing, and we're proposing 10.
So yeah, you're proposing 10, and Mr. D'Amico suggesting 12, which seems like a reasonable thing, given the amount of traffic that's going to be going in and out of there. Okay, those make sense. We can consider those in our, in our motion. Okay, can anybody, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board at this time. The project was approved by the BPDA on October 14th, 2021. The applicant has met with the community and has received support from the Community Alliance of Mission Hill and the Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is Anthony Vias. I'm from Councilor Bob's office. As was said, the applicant has met with Kent Neighborhood Groups and received support from Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services and the community. and the Community Alliance of Mission Hill. The project will provide an opportunity for homeownership in a neighborhood that is in need of more and is investing in much-needed transportation improvements. Councilor Bock is in support of the proposal.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, do we have to be raised hands? I'll start with Adam. Hi, Adam, I prompted to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Chair, members of the board, Adam Sarban, Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services, speaking in support of the project. The proponent has met since 2006, when the original, originally started with the community, and spoke and did do a large amount of affordable housing in that Phase One. The scope of bringing the unit count down with this proposal is with the consideration of the community and making larger units than they had, which we're completely satisfied with the layouts and applaud the Wynn Development for their cooperation with the community on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll go over to Martin. Hi, Martin, I prompted to unmute you. Okay, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm Martin Beinborn.
Oh, can you speak up? We can't hear you.
Martin Beinborn, resident of Mission Hill and president of the Community Alliance of Mission Hill. I'm here to testify that the community discussed this proposal and voted in support. We were very attracted by the prospect of having increased owner occupancy with the provisions that Mr. Henley mentioned. 85% of the attendees voted in support, 15 abstained, and none objected. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Anderson, I prompted to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Richard.
Whatever. Meeting for this, but, so currently, as it is, I have a parking space, a garage space in Phase One, and the exit is where the new building is supposed to be located.
Wait, sir, can you put your address in the record?
Yeah, it's Richard Anderson, 166 Terrace Street.
Okay.
Unit 401.
Okay.
Yeah, so as I was saying, as it currently stands, we have a parking garage space in the unit. The entrance is on the far side of the building, and the exit is where the new building is proposed to be located. So I was just wondering how the exit of the parking garage is going to be relocated or reworked, like under this new building addition?
Okay, Mr. Henley, want to address that? Mr. Henley, are you muted?
I'm sorry, yes. Jeff, can you speak to how these two buildings, the site plan, how we're coordinating this?
Yeah, so Wynn intends to make the entryway an entry and exit for the existing garage instead of a one-way. So they'll be reconfiguring the parking layouts within the existing building to allow two lanes of traffic.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other, Madam Ambassador, are there any other way stands?
No, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, Secretary here, we had a couple of letters of support, and we had one letter of opposition.
And the opposition is based on what?
Just all the construction that's going on in Terrace Street.
Okay.
Mr. Sherman, good morning. My name is Perez with the Carpenter Association, we'd like to go on record on support of the project.
Okay, thank you. All righty, okay, so I think Mr. D'Amico had raised some issues that I would suggest be incorporated into, into what the board might make. So can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review to, I know they're going to go through their final design review, but I would love if they could just take a look at the street wall in terms of just continuity of the aesthetics there, as well as from Columbus Ave on the backside, to ensure that we are not looking at the back of a building. I think it's a nice moment there on the southwest corridor. And I know that BPDA pushes for a 10-foot curb cut in terms of traffic, but I guess it warrants another discussion with Mr. D'Amico on BTD for the, to right-size the access point for this building.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It's now after noon, I'm going to suggest that we take a 15-minute break and reconvene at 12:15. 11:16, I'm going to call the session back into order, just checking that everybody is on board. Mr. Fortune?
I'm still here, Madam, Mr. Chair, I almost said Madam Chair.
All right, gee, that's the second time, keeping track. Okay, Mr. Robinson? Mr. Robinson there, not yet? Okay, Mr. Ujero?
Nope, sorry, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. Both of us here, yep.
Okay, Emmett, Ms. Don?
Present.
All right, welcome to get back. And Mr. Hampton, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're ready to rock and roll in that case. Stick one more time before we recommence. We are a five-member board today, which means that every board member has to be in support of a motion for the motion to pass. If an applicant chooses not to. If an applicant chooses not to proceed with a five-member board but wants to wait for a full board, you are entitled to ask for administrative deferral, which will be automatically granted. So, having said that, let's, let's go forward, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna call the next three cases, calling BOA 120-7594-3484, Washington Street. There are two companion cases, BOA 120-7600-6D, Williams Street, and BOA 120-7609-69, Williams Street. This is for 3484 Washington Streets. This is restoration of 4,500 square foot Doyle's Cafe, change of occupancy to include 5,000 square feet of market, sixteen new condominium additions, four-story above the market, twenty-two-story parking spaces by city lift, combined three parcels to create 25,291 square feet. Violation Article 54, Section 21, R Street Parking and Loading, Article 55, Section 19, sixteen unit and market uses are forbidden, Article 55, Section 20, FAR has been maxed out, Article 55, Section 20, the building height is maximum, Article 55, Section 20, open space is insufficient, Article 55, Section 41, traffic visibility across the corner, and Article 55, Section 41, two buildings on one lot. This is for 69 Williams? I'm sorry, 60 Williams. This is a four-story, seven-unit condominium building, combined three parcels to create 25,291 square foot. The violation Article 55, Section 40, R Street Parking and Loading, Article 55, Section 40.5D, parking space sizes, Article 55, Section 41, two buildings on the same lot, Article 55, Section 41.1, conformity with existing building alignment, Article 55, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling use is forbidden, Article 55, Section 9, 40: ratio is excessive, Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet, Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories, Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient, and Article 55, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. This is for 69 Williams Street, construct a new three-story multifamily building with six units and six parking spaces, one handicap accessible. Violation Article 55, Section 19, a multifamily dwelling use is forbidden, Article 55, Section 20, FAR has been exceeded, Article 55, 55, Section 20, open space is insufficient, Article 55, Section 20, the rear yard is insufficient, and Article 55, Section 40, R Street Parking and Loading. Name and address for the record, please.
B Goodman, 1785 Columbus Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Goodman, why don't you, this is a fairly ambitious and complicated project, you've got three different case numbers, but I assume you're gonna present them as one comprehensive case, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right, why don't you proceed?
So again, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I think Doyle's Cafe needs no introduction, but this is our attempt to restore it, as well as add on an additional market at grade, which is essentially adjacent to it on the current image, you can see it here as well. We are also adding on housing above the market and above the Doyle's parking lot, and we're adding six additional units across the street on Williams at 69. Just to walk through it, if you actually, sorry, if you go up to the first slide you were on, it makes it much easier, yes, exactly. So the green anchor building is what's the current Doyle's and a two-family next door to it. We would be raising the two-family and then adding on the addition of the market, as well as sixteen condominiums above. The Doyle's Cafe would be restored in its current condition with, you know, handicap accessibility, new kitchens and bathrooms, et cetera, and would be run by local establishment, Brassica Kitchen and Cafe, which is an excellent local Jamaica Plain restaurateur who's gonna move down the road. What we're calling the bridge building is seven condominiums above the parking lot, and then the triangular building is six units, all affordable, and that was done by having a partnership with both JP NDC and the Department of Neighborhood Development. What's amazing about those six units is, A, it's 25% more than required to do, and B, they're big units, four-bed, two-four-bedroom, two-three-bedroom, and two-two-bedroom, family-sized affordable units, which is very unusual in the Washington Street corridor. This is also a project in the Plan JP Rocks Zone, so we worked with the BPDA to conform to the heights that they wanna see, the uses, the activation of street life, widening of sidewalks, street trees, and just, just providing street life. You know, one of the big issues of Washington Street and Doyle's closing on that corner was it's dark now, and this will bring back, you know, twelve hours of lighting, a market for the community that was really sought after, as well as big units. Sixteen three-bedroom in the market, seven two-bedroom, all 1,500 square feet plus, and one parking place for every unit, so that's 29 parking places for the residential, and additional 29 for the commercial. The variances, there are a bunch, but they all are shared across three buildings, so the reason ISD wanted us to do it this way was there's three different addresses, but BPDA considered this one big small project review scattered site project. So they have a parking violation because it's local industrial, multifamily residential is not allowed, two buildings on the same lot, 'cause technically the anchor and the bridge are one single parcel, the FAR is larger than is allowed in the LI District, the height is excessive, but again, this is conforming to the JP Rocks height that they wanted to see here, and there's usable open space insufficiency, but we did add about 33 trees throughout the project. You know, lastly, there's a modal front yard conformity issue with the bridge building, but we ended up moving that to conform with the site next door. So, we're very excited about this, obviously I spent my whole life going to Doyle's, and this is about the best I could hope for, to get a chance to bring it back and have it operational again.
Okay, so there's a, obviously there are a lot of pieces to this project. When you talk about a market, what do you envision being in the market?
The, the perfect example would be Happy Market, which is on South Street and Jamaica Plain, you know, not, they're not committed to it, but that's what I envisioned, like a bodega, you know, it's only 5,000 square feet, it's not gonna be a Whole Foods, it's not gonna be a Trader Joe's, it's a community urban market. So, you know, we've reached out to a few groups like them, and this process has been ongoing for about 14 months, so most of them just say, "Let us know when you have approvals", because for a small family-run organization like that, they just need a lot of certainty as far as, when will the thing open, what do they have to contribute? So, once we get through ZBA and go to ISD, we hope to reach back out to them.
So, right now you're just committed to building a shell, right?
We're committed to building a shell, but if you look closely at the design, it was designed for a market, it has, it has a loading bays, yeah, there you go, you can see in the, in the rear, there's a loading elevator for pallets, there is a pickup drop-off for box trucks, that's to take you down to the basement right there, actually, that's the loading bay, but if you go down one more to the next page, you'll see, exactly, so there's the commercial loading zone, and it was well thought out to have, you know, a market-style supermarket door, so they could have checkout at both front and rear, there's public parking in the back, as well as the commercial loading zone.
Okay, and how much public parking is there in the back?
There's 29 total spaces across the rear, as well as the strip on Mead Street, so it exists today at Doyle's, if you go to Doyle's, you know that there's a strip on Mead that had about 11 parking places, that's gonna stay.
But those will also be used by the residential units, no?
Uh, no, those are not, residential have their own deeded parking places, this will stay public.
Okay, so they're gonna be, the residential will be designated strictly for the people who live in the units?
Correct, every unit has one parking place.
Okay, and what's the size of the restroom?
About, a little under 5,000 feet as well. So the only difference between the current Doyle's and the, and the updated version is, the third room, the Fitzgerald Room, is going away, and what we're gonna do is create a new version of what we're actually calling the Kennedy Room, but it will serve the same purpose, there'll be, you know, a drop-down projector, a sound system, it's essentially a private room that could have community meetings, the same way the back room in Doyle's always did.
Yeah, okay, all right, and now, I know you already talked some about the size of the unit, just, again, walk us through in the three different pieces, three different sites, what the unit count is and, and the size.
Sure, so on the, the building, what we're calling One Gartland, the one that's above the market, there's 16 units, 12 three-bedroom, four two-bedroom, and they're all 1,500 to 1,600 square feet, these are family-sized units. On the 60 Williams, the seven unit on the Doyle's, current Doyle's parking lot, there is four three-bedroom and three two-bedroom, same size breakdowns, and then across the street in the triangular building, which is 100% affordable, we actually have even bigger units, so there's two four-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms, and two two-bedroom units, and those are quite large.
And these are condo, rental, or mixed?
They're, they're all home ownership, no rental, and they're affordable home ownership, so they would be deeded as affordable, in the city BPDA Article 80 covenants.
Okay, all right. The, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The, the plans are, are good, it, it, you, you hit it, it's, it's a very complex project with a lot of facets to it. You know, I think from personal experience, I live in Dorchester, and we did a market at the, the train station, and it really is, you know, been a great amenity to the neighborhood. It's walkable, there's no parking there, so I, I envision this will be similar to the community at large, I think that's a really nice moment there, and I think that working within the JP Rocks sort of master plan works, and then I think the transitioning down from Washington Street back to the, the smaller buildings in the neighborhood, I think actually worked pretty well, from an urban standpoint in height and density, so, you know, I think the proponent has done a good job of trying to pull a lot of facets together here, and it's complicated, but I really don't have any questions for the proponent on the, on the proposed drawings, I think they're, they're documented well and represent everything that's been proposed, so no further questions on that.
Any, any questions from any other members in the board?
Mr. Chair Secretary here, Mr. D'Amico has spoken two out of the three projects, so I'd like to put in for the record. Regarding 3484 Washington Street, he says remove the unnumbered, unnumbered space behind spaces number eight, increase the width of the handicap parking space to a minimum of 10 feet, and include a visual and audio alarm to warn pedestrians of exiting vehicles. And he's also spoke on 60 Williams. BTD would like to request more detail on the parking plan for this address, although the plan provides a scale, BTD would prefer the measurement be provided on the plan for property review and legal purposes.
Okay, and we'll take those into consideration. I suspect every single member of this board has been at Doyle's at one point or another in their lives, so we're very, I'm sure everyone is familiar with the site, whether you live in JP or not. Okay, why don't we do, any, any questions, any?
Oh, could I just say, sorry, Mr. Chair, one more quick thing, I just forgot to mention that we did have 140 letters of support from the community, and both Council O'Malley, when he was still here, and Rep. Malia, it was an extensive process, it was about 14 months.
Well, I'm sure we'll hear about, I'm sure we'll hear about that in the course of taking testimony. All right, anybody, any elected officials care to weigh in on this project, or representatives of elected?
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tiffany Gobeda here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like Lee Goodman mentioned, this applicant and proposal has undergone an extensive community process, and throughout the process, I have received, just to reiterate, the 140 letters of support, while also recording support or non-opposition from civic associations like the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer the court's judgment, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary, we do have letters of support, we have letters of opposition as well.
Okay, well, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll hear from both, both sides during the testimony.
Thank you, and then we do have a few raised hands, I'll start with Alan, I requested to unmute you, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Alan.
Hang on, yes.
Can I hang on, hang on?
Oh, one sec.
Are, are there any other elected officials or representatives who wish to speak?
Hi, we are posting here from State Representative, Rep. Malia's office, sorry. Um, the representative asked me to come before the, the board today, chairperson and honorable members, to her support for this project. It's really important to have a community gathering space like Doyle's reopen back in the neighborhood, the project offers affordable home ownership, which is something that we don't see enough of, and the opportunity for an additional market space in the neighborhood is also, we think, a really good addition.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, okay, and then Alan, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alan, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, please, you can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, my name is Alan Iyer, I live at 116 Williams Street, you should have received my written comments. I've lived on, for 40 years, on the project street, I met my future wife at Doyle's 30 years ago, and in one of the murals. Please vote to deny the proposal, it badly needs fixing and mitigation, the BPDA rushed this project through with less than five months from the first formal meeting to its board vote. The project relies on BPDA's Plan JP Rocks for its density, but ignores Plan JP Rocks commitments to protect the butters and neighbors. This cherry-picking sets a very bad precedent for the whole Plan JP Rocks area. The project 60 Williams is in our, in our R34,000 residential zoning sub-district, it will loom over the butters, it breaks 11 zoning codes, and also breaks written comments in Plan JP Rocks that protect, protect the butters and neighbors from these violations in our residential zoning sub-district. There are maps to, to support this, including at, at Plan JP Rocks and zoning maps 9C and 9B for our area. This is, this is a...
Okay, can, can you please wrap it up, please? Hello?
Alan, can you? Might be all set, sorry about that. We'll go to Pete, Pete, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Pete Fronholz, 109 Williams Street, just down the block from Doyle's. You know, we welcome more housing and we welcome getting Doyle's back up and running, but as was mentioned, there, there are a lot of violations, the process was rushed, 60 Williams is way too tall and way too close to the neighbors. Again, there's been cherry-picking as far as JP Rocks has been concerned, and, you know, a lot of people in this neighborhood put a lot of time into creating the JP Rocks guidelines, and I think it's unfortunate that, that the guidelines are being cherry-picked. You know, the, the traffic and parkings has not been adequately addressed, 29 spaces seems really low for a market and, and what everybody expects to be a very busy restaurant. There's this fantasy about people biking in February to go to the restaurant, and that would not have happened even last weekend. Washington Street is incredibly busy, and it's hard to imagine that some of those folks stuck in traffic won't pull over to go to the market, or, you know, to the restaurant, so the, there has no, there hasn't been an earnest effort to really address to the neighborhood what the traffic implications are gonna be, so.
All right.
Is some improved?
Okay, and I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Oh, okay. All right, that's it, I had thought that there were, there were more, okay.
There are some supporters here to speak though, aren't there, madam?
Uh, yeah, hang on, we'll, we'll...
I apologize, we do have more raised hands, I have to keep you fresh on the screen, I apologize, let me go with Marcus. Marcus Walker? Can you unmute yourself? Or Peter, or Sean, it's Patrick?
I... I.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'm happy to go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Peter Gorey, one eleven Perkins Street, Jamaica Plain. I've been involved in this project, representing the Burke family for over two and a half years. And we began this process before deciding on the watermark team as the purchaser and developer. And conducted six meetings with the Save Doyle's group, of which one of the opponents participated in. So this is a well over two and a half year process, not a five-month process.
We're mostly interested in hearing from others. We understand that you would be in support of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Sean, it's Patrick. I requested to unmute you.
Hi, Sean, this is Patrick, Everett Street, so close neighbor. I would love to see this project move forward. I think it's a great plan. It's a black hole over there right now, just getting at worse and worse state. I walk my dog by there nightly and it'd be nice to have some street activity and have another market close by to be able to pop to, to pick things up and just to see some life in Doyle's again. It's greatly missed and I think this would be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Marcus in the state. Marcus, are you still interested in giving testimony or you're all set? I prompted for you to unmute yourself, but if you're all set, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, minor unrest represented in the carpenters' union. On behalf of Contras Union Carpenters, I live at Warcross, see the boss, I want to go to record and support.
Okay, and then Marcus, I'm sorry, we can hear you. You've been unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Marcus Walker. I live on thirty-one Plainfield Street and I would like to offer my support of this project. I think it's been a lot, add a lot of value to the neighborhood and create a community space that has been really needed since the pandemic.
Thank you. And I have no additional pressure, I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, well, that's good. We, I mean, we got some, we got some feedback, both positive and negative. Okay, can I, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, motion to approve BPDA designer view.
Can I add in there, just to sort of continue working with BTD to get some of Mr. D'Amico's concerns resolved?
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Calling an next case, calling DOA one one eight nine three zero seven, three-half Moon Street. Mister, convert an existing basement into a fourth unit on an existing three-family structure. The violation is Article fifty, section twenty-eight. Four units in a three-half zone is conditional. Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the additional larger area is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, good afternoon, board. Joseph Luna, Luna Design Group, we are the project architects for this. One hundred Conifer Hill Drive, Suite four oh six, located in Danvers, zero one nine two three on the zip code. What we have here is a pre-existing three-family house with a finished basement. The intent is to convert the finished basement into a legal fourth unit. As part of the work, we'll be installing a NIPA thirteen R residential fire suppression system. Even though the house, the building is a three-family, it is currently not sprinklered so by, and is grandfathered. So by doing so, by putting the fourth unit in, we will bring it up to current, to current fire, fire alarm and sprinkler codes. It is a walkout and our intent is to use the existing rear door and windows as part of the renovation. I should also point out is that there is an existing bathroom inside the space. My understanding of the history of the house is that originally it was a single-family house that was that with, with a finished basement that was then converted into a two-family, then converted into a three. My understanding is that permits were pulled during each conversion from the single-family two to the three. My client, Francois Toka, I believe is on this conference as well. If he has any specific questions, you can address with him. We have eight letters of support from abutters of the building. We have met with the neighborhood association and received no objection.
Okay, well, we'll hear about that separately. Okay, what is the size of the new unit?
Eight hundred and fifty-four square feet. There is no extension of building footprint as part of this renovation.
Okay, and what is the floor-to-ceiling height of the basement?
Eight feet.
Eight feet. And what is the floor-to-grade height of, out to the outside grade height?
At the rear, we have a door that exits right to grade.
And at the front?
At the front, give you that information right now. We're roughly located about four, four feet from, from the curb line to the, to the grade, to the floor line.
Okay. Is it possible to see, are there any elevations or sections?
No, because we did not do measured elevations on this. We did it with field notes. And since there was no increase in footprint on this, we just confined the work to the, to the basement.
No, I understand that, but the critical issues that come before this board are in whether we approve living space in the basement is whether it feels like, whether there is walkout space and whether it feels like it's an excessive use of space that was not intended to be used for living space if it's, if it's too far underground and too dark. And we can only tell that with the elevations and sections. And we've been saying this for years and I don't understand why I have to keep saying this every single time. People should have learned by now. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings? Can you, can you tell anything?
The drawings unfortunately don't call out any of that information. You know, by my review online, the site does fall away. You're facing left to right. It does appear the rear door is at grade, so, and the grade sort of slopes away. So there is mechanical and storage at what it appears the deepest part, and the bedrooms do seem to open up to somewhere. So without the real information on it, it, it looks to be adequately above grade, especially toward the rear, but I don't have the technical data to really.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm looking at Google Maps right now and if you look on the, it's the yellow house, right?
Um, yes, and I could actually send you a Google Street View.
I'm looking at that, I'm looking at that now. It does look, it does look adequate, Mr. Chair. But, yeah, we don't have the data to show that, but from the Google view, it looks fine.
Okay, I mean.
Yeah, it looks, it looks higher than normal. I mean, and the grade falls away, so it does have a, quite a bit of a first-floor walk-up in terms of inside. It's hard to tell.
I, I, you know, I'm.
I get it.
And I don't have, I don't have the Google Maps in front of me, so I'm glad, glad for that input. I just don't understand why people who come before this board haven't learned this lesson. And we always ask the same questions and we always, and it can only be answered by elevations or sections. And I really wish that people who come before this board with wanting standard-looking space in the basement would provide us with the information so that we can make an intelligent decision and an informed decision. Anyway, that's my soapbox for the day.
We'll make sure.
All right, can we, let's move to, any other questions on the board? All right, let's move to the testimony.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is Jason Gamp from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And abutters meeting was held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, in which eleven participants were in the meeting. I do believe it was about eight abutters. There was support and opposition voiced on the actual abutters meeting. I do have the eight letters of support that Joseph did mention already. I do know that there were two members who did oppose the actual project in that meeting and did submit two letters of opposition, which you all should have as well.
Can you, can you summarize what the opposition was based on?
Just the actual living in the basement as a lot of people felt, well, the three of the abutters felt that that's something that shouldn't be going on in the Roxbury neighborhood. They were just vehemently opposed to actually having any sort of living space in the basement. And another note was also parking as well with the additional people who will be in those units.
Okay, thank you.
We are going to be deferring to the board for the vote on this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary, we do have those letters of support. We also have those letters of opposition and the opposition is what the Mayor, Mayor's Office wants to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do have a raised hand by Melissa Miranda. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name's Melissa Miranda. I live at seven Chamblit Street. I also own fourteen Half Moon Street and ten Half Moon Street. So I am opposed to the building being turned into a four-family. Parking is a major issue in this neighborhood with the addition of multiple shelters in the neighborhood. Parking is virtually impossible, often when people get home from work. And people who do have curb cuts can barely get in and out of them. So that's my main concern is parking. My other concern is the, as the Mr. Luna stated, the architect, it was originally built as a single-family, not a three-family. And it isn't a particularly large building. So, you know, adding this fourth unit, which is not really conducive of the other buildings in the neighborhood, it's definitely a stretch, to say the least. Most of the buildings on the street are single and two-family.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, no additional raised hands.
There are none?
There are no additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Could I make a motion to defer this? I think we don't have the proper data and I do think it's online and the fact that we do have abutters who are in opposition, I think we want to make sure it's accurate and correct. So I would like to make a motion to defer to another date when we can have some more information on the grade.
Okay, we can provide the necessary.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yes, so to the applicant, I think our point is, it's what I said for, which is, we are, we are, it's our mission to make these judgment calls and it's very difficult to make these judgment calls without the kind of information and data that, so that we can feel like it's informed as opposed to a subjective decision. So please come, please, you'll be getting a date from Mr. Fortune, but when you come back, please come back with elevations or sections. And it is a little unusual, I think, to start with a single-family house and turn it into a four-family without really ever changing the footprint. So, so that's, I mean, we want the information and.
Okay, well, we have the information, we'll just put it into a graphic form.
Okay, Mr. Fortune, can you give him a date?
Yeah, you'll have a date of February eighth at twelve-thirty.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before, you know, ten minutes of twelve, we got one more case. I was going to call the twelve-thirties, but we can continue and finish this up and then go right to the twelve-thirties if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's ten minutes, yeah, ten oh one. I mean, do you want to just see about withdrawals and deferrals at twelve-thirties? That'd be fine.
Yeah, but I don't know if you want to make your normal comments about the five-member board.
I'll do that when, when we get to the twelve-thirties.
Okay. So I'm going to call the twelve-thirties then for deferrals or withdrawals. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the twelve-thirty cases?
Three seventy-seven Maverick Street.
Thank you. For the record, sorry. For the record, calling DOA one one five nine zero four eight three seventy-seven Maverick Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Laurence Cutino, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston from Richard Linz's office. We would like to withdraw this matter.
Motion for denial.
Denial of presence, yeah.
Denial of presence, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for twelve-thirty? Address, please.
I have seventy Shawshank Street.
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA one two 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 three zero seven, seventy Shawshank Street. Name and address for the applicant.
Laurence Cutino, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston from Richard Linz's office, requesting a shot deferral on this due to the five-member board. These, this case was actually set back in December, but the board had to defer on its own due to technical issues, so we were hoping for a shot deferral.
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
You'll have the last date, February eighth at twelve-thirty.
Fifty-seven Webster Street.
For the record, calling DOA one zero six five eight eight six fifty-seven Webster Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Laurence Cutino, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston, again requesting a shot deferral due to the five-member board.
Make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
We'll squeeze that in for February eighth as well at twelve-thirty.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for twelve-thirty? Hey, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's go back and finish up.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one two four nine seven one one, one ninety-one to one ninety-five Bowden Street. This is the Dorchester Food Co-op, poses six thousand square foot commercial interior renovation at one ninety-five Bowden Street. Local convenience, subdesperate local retail business, grocery store. Condition, three hundred square foot cafe seating space with store offer takeout. Violation is Article sixty-five, section fifteen, use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay? My name is Miriam G. I'm the architect and store designer at Co-Everything from fourteen fifty-two Dorchester Ave. Out of Fields Corner Business Lab, oh two one two two, presenting on behalf of Marcos Balleche, who cannot make it today as the board president of the Dorchester Food Co-op. Thank you for your time today. As was stated, the Dorchester Food Co-op is a full-service grocery store with a focus on produce and bulk goods. We are a startup of one thousand two hundred and thirty-three member households, representing fifty-six member households from the Bowden, Geneva and Meeting House Hill neighborhoods. This grocery store is an expression of our community and as so, at the intersection of Bowden and Toplif, this six thousand square foot commercial space, after we went through a series of community design planning meetings in twenty twenty, we discovered a need for a community cafe with indoor seating and takeout for coffee, tea, juice, smoothies, and some of the grab and grow, grab and go prepared foods that we hope to have prepared by local vendors. So as, even though there are two thousand to three thousand square foot of additional seating that you can see here in this kind of like triangular open plaza as being provided by our landlord via aid, we decided to incorporate a three hundred square foot small indoor seating area with a prep counter for cafe drinks. And because of that, we have a conditional use, although as of right, we can build the grocery store. It is a conditional use to be approved by the zoning board on if we can provide takeout. We believe that this is completely in line with what the neighbor, neighborhood is seeking. Folks have often asked for a place to gather and get together and there's not an existing cafe in the immediate neighborhood. This is also the sole ground floor commercial tenant of this multi-story mixed-use affordable housing development by Viet Aid, so we think it will be a great amenity also to the residents and future tenants of this building.
Okay, thank you. So really, the only approval that you're seeking from this board is for the takeout use, correct?
Correct.
The rest of it's as of right. Okay, what is in the space now? Is it empty?
The building is currently under construction, so it's currently storing a lot of materials for the main building.
So you're going to get a shell, which you will build out, is that right?
Correct. This is a TI of six thousand square feet.
All right, so the only, the only questions that we have in situations like this. All right, so the, the only questions that we have in situations like this is whether the proponent has any experience with takeout and the various regulations that exist in the city of Boston.
Well, as this is a new store, we have yet to hire our store general manager, though the description of the store general manager is available and we have currently a firm that we've hired to help us seek out the proper general manager. So we purposefully have worked with Bipla Rai and other folks who are commercial and retail establishments in the area who offer takeout to kind of come up with that job description. So there is no existing person right now who has experienced.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Now, you don't have to identify someone, what we, what we will then, if we approve this, we will ask you, it will come with provisos to follow the protocols that exist in the city of Boston to deal with takeout. So usually, if someone has experience with it, they know what to do, how to store trash, all the various things that are, and if someone doesn't, then there is, then you'd need to work with the very, the relevant city agencies to figure out how to do it. So that's, that's all, that's the only reason I'm asking. Okay, I mean, not that it matters in real investigation, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are, are great and I've been following this project for a while and, you know, I think it's gonna be a great addition to the neighborhood, so super excited to see this move forward. No questions for the proponent.
Okay, any questions in the board? All right, is there, excuse me, it's time for testimony. Any elected officials or representatives of elected officials?
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name's Denise Santos from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to defer to the board. The applicants have met with community members, the main streets, and they have plenty of support from community members and businesses within the Bowdoin and the street corridor. And they also have support from the small businesses within that corridor as well, and the community is looking forward to have this addition to the street, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dustin Gardner on behalf of City Councilor Brian Morell, like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have one raised hand. Mary Reagan, are you here to give testimony in this proposal? If so, can you unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please?
Again, I live at four twenty five.
Mr. Chair, I await, Secretary, we do have a couple letters of support.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, had some technical difficulties. My name's Mary Reagan, I live at four twenty-five Galivan Boulevard. I've been going to a lot of the community meetings with relationship to the Dorchester Food Co-op, of which I'm a member, and I'm doing community organizing for the co-op. And so I went to the United Neighbors Association meeting, the Meeting House Hill Association meeting, the Greater Boston, Geneva Neighborhood Association. We also had meetings with Mount Bowdoin Betterment Association. At all these meetings, there was pretty overwhelming support. And also, when I've talked with people on Bowdoin Street and Toplift and set up a table just to listen to people's comments, people were excited not only to have the store, but to have a place where they could drop in, get some coffee and a pastry, and go over about their day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay, and I'll go ahead, go over to Davida. Hi, can you unmute yourself, Davida? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, Davida?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, still have, yeah, sorry, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Davida Andelmann, ninety-four Clarkson Street in Dorchester, a couple blocks away from the location of the Food Co-op. As chair of the Greater Bowdoin, Geneva Neighborhood Association, I have to say that the Food Co-op has gone above and beyond due diligence in reaching out to the community. There is massive support, not only for the co-op itself, but for the cafe. And even though there is a restaurant right down the street, One Family Diner, which everybody knows of, they close at two o'clock. The Food Co-op's gonna be opened much later into the day. And so, as been stated before, the interest and the need for a cafe-related use is much appreciated. So that concludes my remarks, please support.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Marcos, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Marcos Balleche, I'm at, I live at three Jarvis Place in Roxbury. And I happen to also be a member-owner of the board of the Dorchester Food Co-op, president of the board. I want to just also share my support for this and thank everybody who has commented in favor. It's been a long process coming and as Miriam also mentioned at the beginning, our planning process really brought out just how important the need for a gathering place for the community and a cafe was, and so we're, you know, happy to be moving forward with this. I also happen to be the director for the Four Corners Main Street program and understand just how important it is to bring anchor commercial businesses like the co-op that can further create for traffic for our smaller businesses. So thank you all for the time and your support.
Thank you, and I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, do we have a design review on this? Or?
For signage, maybe? Jeff, you want?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and with the usual takeout language?
Yeah, usual takeout, yeah.
Okay, and I would just suggest to the applicant that given that this is your first foray into the world of takeout, is please, please, you know, contact the folks at IFC to deal with what the takeout language entails. So, okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we'll now move to the rediscussions. We had some deferrals. I will say once again, for those remaining cases, that we are a five-member board, which means that in order for a motion to pass, every member must vote in favor. If, if the applicant does not want to take the risk of not having unanimous support, they're entitled to get, request an administrative deferral, which we will automatically grant. So having said that, let's move forward with the twelve thirty rediscussions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna call the next two cases, calling DOA one one two two eight nine three six, seven to eleven Curtis Street. There is companion case, DOA one two two eight nine four nine six seventy to six seventy-two Saratoga Street. Are you moving forward? Mr. Echol?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is, seven to eleven Curtis Street, this is direct a new residential building with twenty-three units and seventeen parking spaces and a newly created lot containing eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square foot. Violation's Article twenty seventeen dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section eight, a multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section fifty-seven point three, traffic visibility across the corners. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for six seventy to six seventy-two Saratoga Street. This erect a new residential building with six units and a newly created lot containing three thousand six hundred and fifty-two square feet. Violation's Article twenty seventeen dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Believe that, oh, there you go, one, a couple different ones. Article fifty-three, section eight, use of multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Drago and Toscano, business address of eleven Beacon Street. On behalf of the applicant, also with me is Jonathan Garland from J. Garland Enterprises, the project architect. As mentioned, we are seeking to combine four existing lots into two new lots, raise the existing commercial structure and erect two residential buildings. One building that you're seeing there, it's frontage on Curtis and Chaucer Street, will contain twenty-three units and seventeen parking spaces. And the second structure, which you can see on the screen there, is at six seventy dash six seventy-two Saratoga Street, and that'll contain six units. The project as a whole did go through the BPDA Small Project Review Process. Originally, it was one large building that then got split up into two separate distinct buildings to provide some more rear yard between the two buildings. It did get approved by the BPDA Board on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. The existing uses on the building, as you can, on the lots, as you can see there, there's a single-story large commercial structure on the seven eleven Curtis Street lot and the lots on Saratoga, which you'll see on the next slide, I believe, are currently vacant. So all told, we are proposing twenty-nine units and seventeen parking spaces with four affordable units, approximately fourteen percent affordability. I will note, we're proposing one affordable unit of each type of unit, so one studio, one one-bed, one two-bed, and we have one three-bedroom unit in this project, and we're proposing that as affordable as well. Overall, for the unit breakdown, there are three studios at approximately five hundred one square feet, twelve one-bedroom units at seven hundred and thirty-three square feet, thirteen two-bedroom units at an average of nine hundred and seventy-four square feet, and that one three-bedroom unit, which I mentioned, will be affordable at twelve hundred and ninety-three square feet. Just to go through the floor plans quickly, in the Curtis Street building, so seven eleven Curtis, which again fronts on Chaucer, and Curtis Street, we're proposing seventeen below-grade parking spaces. Those will be accessed off a ramp from Chaucer Street. There'll also be a trash room, an electrical and sprinkler room in this lower level. As you move up to the first floor, we have the main entrance, which will be off Curtis Street. We also have a separate residence garage. And then we have two units, a two-bedroom unit access from Curtis Street and the one three-bedroom unit access from Chaucer Street. So we have two units with direct access off the street as well as the common lobby entrance. As you move up through the building, the second, third, and fourth floor all contains seven units each with one studio, four one-beds, and two two-bedroom units. Moving over to the Saratoga Street site, six seventy to six seventy-two Saratoga Street, this is proposed as a three-story unit. It'll have two bedrooms, two two-bedroom units per floor, per total of six units. As mentioned, there are some violations, including use, so two F district, we are proposing multifamily on both sites. FAR allows twenty-eight, we're proposing two point nine on the Curtis Street site and two point two at Saratoga. Lot area for Saratoga is required four thousand, we have just under at thirty-six fifty-two. Height on the Curtis Street building, we're allowed two and a half stories, thirty-five feet, we are at four stories and forty-four. And the visual you see in front of you now is the Saratoga Street. We do have a stories violation, even though you can see we're aligned with most of the abutters, two and a half stories is allowed, we are proposing three, but we do comply with feet. We also are seeking variances for front, side, and rear yard. And parking, we are proposing the seventeen total parking spaces underneath the Curtis Street site, and required would be two point oh on the, on the Curtis Street site and one point five at the Saratoga. Along with the creation of these units, we would be really improve the infrastructure of the Curtis and Chaucer Street sidewalks with new street trees, public bike racks for visitors and members of the community, as well as contributions to the Blue Bike Fund. With that, I'll pause and take any questions from members of the board.
Um, so, okay, so let me, let me ask you some questions about the Curtis Street. The Saratoga Street design seems to be contextual and that the roof lines line up with the abutting buildings. The Curtis Street seems to be a significantly larger than what's around it. Am I, am I seeing that wrong or what's, what, just the contextual, if you can respond two questions about Curtis Street. One is the contextual design, and the second is the parking. You've got twenty-three units with seventeen parking spaces. How, what happens to the poor six units who get left out in the cold? How is that, is it designated? Is it musical chairs? Whoever ends up there first gets it? What's the process?
Go ahead, Matt. Sorry, go ahead. I was gonna, I was gonna start with the contextual question. I think as far as scale and fitting into the neighborhood, this has been a really close collaboration with the city, and in those talks, what we talked about was the building kind of anchoring the corner and then feeding back into the neighborhood into the three-decker triple, you know, triple-decker height and scale. And that's why we've addressed a strong cornice line at the third floor, going from the third to the fourth, so that that transition is made. But the terminology that we made in those meetings were things like bookending the block and really creating a strong terminus at the intersection of Curtis and Chaucer Street. Matt, I'll let you address the parking ratio.
Just before, Matt, before you start, can we get a rendering of the, of the Curtis Street building in context while you're, while you're talking? Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Absolutely. So I, what we're showing here is the, the white treatment above or the fiber cement that's a lighter band separating and breaking from the, the middle part of the building. And so it really reads as a clear delineation of base, middle, and top. And so that middle portion between dark blue and white is that strong datum line that kind of carries across.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that the design has broken up the, the elevations, but it still seems like the roof line, the top line, is higher than what's around it. Again, I'd have to look at Google Maps, which I'm not doing. Maybe somebody who can do that can enlighten me, but it seems like it's, it seems like it's just pretty much bigger than anything else around.
It is, it is taller, and what I'm saying is urbanistically, that's thought of as bookending the block in the sense of, of kind of creating a slightly higher terminus point than what's around it because it's at the outer intersection.
Yeah, I, I heard you when you said that, I understand. Okay, let, can you, Mr. Echol, can you talk about the parking?
Sure, and, and just one more thing about the location of the Curtis Street building, not to belabor the point, but as Jonathan mentioned, kind of bookending, I won't use that term again, but we do abut directly Route one A. So we only have really abutters on those two sides that we're trying to kind of mold into, I should say. So if you look at the Google images provided, we do abut the highway on, on kind of one and a half sides there, so just for a little bit more context.
And then, and then, Matt, Mr. Echol, is, isn't there another project on Chaucer further up that I see when I'm coming, going one A or?
Sure, there's two, two larges, existing apartments down Chaucer Street a little bit, which is a very large brick existing building.
Yeah, the school, but the new construction.
Recently approved project, I believe. Yeah, it abuts both, it's a through lot, so it's both on Chaucer and Saratoga, I believe it was for thirty units. So similar in, in size in terms of unit count and density. In, in terms of parking, the Curtis Street building is designed currently as a rental building, so I don't believe it's been finalized if that'll be assigned spaces or, or it will be kind of a come-as-you-go. I, I believe they'll be assigned to avoid that confusion. So when you rent a unit, you'll know if you have a parking space or if you'll be relying on public transportation and street parking.
I hope the rent reflects that.
I just, I just have some, some comments, and maybe we can include this in a proviso if so, if we do approve this, is some, the improvements to the public realm there. I mean, the existing commercial building doesn't really go with what's going on there, and to put residential isn't, isn't the worst thing in the world, but there's no trees over there, there's no green space, no anything, if we can really focus on improving that corner and it's, when you're coming into East Boston from the highway, you can see what's there, you're gonna see this building, it's clear as day, and some sorts of improvements to the, the public space over there would be, I think, much appreciated, especially where there's no green space on site of the building itself.
If I can just. Let's move to, let's move to Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
We just lost Mr. Robinson for a moment, he's, well.
Okay, then we'll come back to him. Let's move to public testimony. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the project? Elected official, sure.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board's judgment with some background information on the community process. This went through an extensive BPDA-round community process. The applicant presented to the Harborview Neighborhood Association, however, they did not achieve their support. After that, they made modifications to the proposal based off of the feedback they received at that civic association meeting, including reducing the height. And since then, we've received 150 letters of support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Robinson is back. If you wanted to ask him a question.
Hi, sorry about that. I'm having some problems. And I'm sure you've already moved on. But I think I was sort of just supporting the general consensus. I do feel like the Curtis Street building is a little bit big. I wish there would be a little bit more productive in terms of its setbacks. And I like Mr. Rogirio's sort of concerns about the urban quality of the street because it was being anchored by the mechanical room in the building. So I think there definitely needs to be a little bit of rethinking of some of the program and the activation on the street, which we could certainly address, I think, in a proviso. No other questions from me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Secretary here. We do have our letters of support and letters of opposition.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Mr. Fortune, can you tell what the letters of opposition were based on?
I think just the yellow growth, parking, size of the project, there's a whole bunch of opposition. There's a whole bunch of support as well.
Okay. All right, Ms. Ambassador, no more raising?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, mine operates with the carpenters. You would like to go and recommend support of the project.
And I know we typically don't ask this, but I'm gonna ask this question. Mr. Echol, when you first presented to Harborview, what was your height and where are you now?
Sure. So very beginning, prior to going to Harborview, we were at five stories and then went down to four on Curtis. And then on the Saratoga side, we were at four. So we were four across the board. We heard strong feedback that based on the roof lines along Saratoga, three would be more appropriate there. So we did reduce that by one story. Mr. Robinson, to your point and Mr. your previous point, we agree wholeheartedly. We think a portion of this project is the future street activation. So we do have two units that come directly off, one off Chaucer, one off Curtis, that'll have little insets and little areas for landscaping. We'll also be complying with streets, adding street trees, bike racks. So we view this as a good opportunity to really clean up kind of this whole corridor and this whole intersection of Chaucer and Curtis.
Okay, thank you. Are there no more testimony, Ambassador?
Refresh my... No, sir.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review to focus on the fourth-floor setback to see if maybe we can set it back a little bit. Street trees, greenscaping, green spacing, green space and activating the street level as much as possible too in the design review.
I will second that. Those are great. I mean, Mr. Rogirio, I love hearing it. So yeah, I think it needs a little bit of help, but I think it could be done through the design review. Second that.
And the Saratoga Street building looks great. So just, this is...
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr. Hampton, did you get that? Mr. Hampton is still with us. Okay, well, let's keep moving.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 124-6029, 43 Stillman Street. Just to combine two lots into a newly created single lot to be 1,405 square feet. Direct a new two-family dwelling with ground-level garage, parking, and four stories of living space above. The top unit to have a roof deck. Violations, Article 32, Section 4. This is G-Cod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Greg McCarthy for 43 Stillman.
You want to go ahead and tell us what you're proposing?
Sure, yep. So we are proposing a two-family on what is now a small parking area. It's gonna be roughly 4,000 square feet. Ground floor will have garage parking. And then each unit above will be bi-level units. So the fourth and fifth floor will be one unit and the second and third floor will be one unit. For outdoor space, the top unit has a roof deck. The first unit has a small patio area behind the building. The building is conforming other than that it lies in the G-Cod district. So we have a no-harm letter and our approved Boston Water and Sewer Plan, which I had sent over a couple of months ago. This one was deferred from the December meeting.
Okay, so wait, so are you saying other than G-Cod, that the rest of it is as of right and you don't need any variances?
Correct, yep.
Okay, well, then let's move to Christian. Are you there, Christian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good morning, actually, good afternoon. Christian Seminale, Boston Water and Sewer Trust. And we have both the Boston Water and Sewer approval and no-harm letters.
We have them as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I think if that's the case, and that's really the only issue, I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Can I add with BPDA Design Review? I think this is actually at an extremely critical visual point on the Greenway. I think we should make sure that BPDA reviews it for design.
Well, we can hope that the BPDA takes it. The problem is what's before us is really only the question of G-Cod applicability. And they have the, you know, the appropriate paperwork and documentation. So I think it's perfectly fine to wish for that. We can, Mr. Hampton, are you there? I think we may have lost Mr. Hampton for this end. But I mean, in terms of our authority, really, all we can take care of is the G-Cod issue.
Got it.
So, okay, so motions are made. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and again, because of that, there's no need for public testimony.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 110-1370, 16 Baker Court. This is to erect a four-story multifamily building with six residential units, no parking, private roof deck, and six bike racks, one in each unit. The existing building is to be razed. Violation, Article 65, Section 15, a multifamily dwelling against conditional use. Article 65, Section 16, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 16, the building height is excessive. Article 65, Section 16, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 16, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 41, post-re-parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Robinard?
Mr. Name, I didn't remember checking in.
Joe Hanley's muted.
Joanne, Joanne you said?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Secretary of National Support.
Go ahead.
Attorney Joe Hanley. I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Here with Adam Sarba from Cornerstone Real Estate, who is the proponent developer. Also here with Niti John from Preles Cholinsky Architects. Just to give you some background, this is the third of a three-building development, which went through the BPDA's Article 80 Large Project Review. Its other two buildings were approved by this board with a few provisos. At its October hearing, and those decisions have now gone through the process, there was a discrepancy in the way that the legal ad was done for this particular building, which is the smallest of the three. And what is being proposed is a four-story, six-unit building that is part of 191-unit mixed housing development here in backup South Bay along Willow and Baker Court. We have a mix of condominiums, residential units. These are our larger residential units in a smaller-scale building. And so with that, I'd like to ask Niti John to just take you through the plans very quickly. Niti?
Thanks, Joe. Your chair, what you see on the screen is all the floor plans, all the four-floor plans. I'd like to quickly confirm, there are six units. The bottom two floors, we have a one-bed and two-bed units. And the top two floors that you see on the top, that is number three, floor three and floor four, are the same unit. These are two loft units. So they are two-bedroom units plus the loft space. So that's totally how we have six units. The basement in the bottom right shows the storage mechanical spaces and the six bike racks that we have for the units. And the topmost on the roof that you see, that is only a private patio for that one unit on the right side. One loft unit has access to a private deck. That's programmatically. I have the unit sizes because I think this is, the chair had requested that the last time we had shown the other two buildings. The one-bedroom, which is the smallest unit, is 700 square feet. All the other two bedrooms and loft units are from 1,277 square feet down to 983. And one unit that's 910 square feet. So these, like Joe said, are the larger units in the development. What else would you like to know from our end?
Mr. Hanley, could you remind me why this is back for rediscussion?
Yeah, so there are three separate BOA cases. In this one, there was an ad wasn't properly advertised. They didn't get all of the correct violations cited. And so we asked that it be re-advertised. It was, it had to be reviewed again because like a lot of Article 80 projects, there were a series of modifications. The plan examiner just missed the citation.
Okay. And what is the access to the private roof deck?
It's from the unit on the top right unit that you see a stair going through. It's from the loft inside the unit. It's purely private.
Is it a headhouse or a hatch?
It is a, it cannot be a hatch for code reasons. So it is an actual walkable space.
Wait, say that again?
It's not a hatch. A hatch is not allowed per the code.
That's four-story. Can you show us? I mean, we have seen headhouses that are designed in such a way that they minimize the view. We've seen headhouses that look like a four-story. Can you show us what the head?
Yes, I think the next few sheets should have the renderings and the views. Our intent, to be very honest, is to have a headhouse that is minimal. So I know we show this as a rectangular box, but normally when you do the headhouses, we could angle it. So to your point, it would be the visual.
One of the ways in which designers achieve minimization of a headhouse is a sloping roof instead of a box.
We would love to do that. That is definitely on our...
Okay, how are the drawings for that, Mr. Robinson?
Drawings are pretty straightforward, no question. I think the headhouse has been discussed, so we can caption it later. No other questions.
Any questions in the board?
Can you remind, quick question. Can you remind us, does the street, are you gonna create a street so that it actually goes through and goes on to Allstate? Because otherwise, it's a hot mess back there.
You've got a good memory. We are opening up Baker Court to the...
To Allstate?
To open it up, not to All... Yes, sorry, yes, to Allstate. Yes, you are.
Yes, Ms. Dunn remembers because it's near and dear to her heart.
It sure is. My other comment is the same as with the other project, the other presentation you made, which is, I know everybody thinks everybody bicycles or whatever, but there are lots of cars parked by here. And have there been conversations with that garage as with the other project?
Adam can speak to that on ongoing conversations. But yes, we did approach them to make that building better, the garage better, and we put bollards at the end of the street. So this did not become a cut-through traffic issue. So we have three bollards on the road, so cars are not just looping in.
Yeah, I think you mentioned, you know, the hot mess, so to speak, is, you know, these are a series of private ways, right, that we are able to govern together with the abutters who we've worked really closely with. But the parking situation today is just simply not organized on, you know, Baker Court. And a lot of this project is to deliver a lot of infrastructure improvements and access improvements. With respect to the garage, that garage today, if you were to go over there, and obviously retail's been a little impacted, but it is routinely, has enormous amount of capacity. I know that because I go over there quite frequently, especially as part of this project review. Now, you know, that's not a direct affiliation with our project, but certainly there's nothing to stop visitors from utilizing that, meeting someone at Starbucks and the like. And the whole idea of this infrastructure plan be on page four of the presentation is to show how we can integrate this enclave of the neighborhood better with South Bay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move to public testimony. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. George Nguyen with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. For the last few years, the applicant has worked through multiple iterations while responding to community feedback. The applicant was asked to mitigate any negative changes to transit and streetscape by fortifying parking and street infrastructure. So at this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McEchrin, City Council Frank Baker's office would like to go in support of this application.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, townspeople in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a few raised hands here. I'll start with Brad W. Brad, I sent a request over for you to be unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Resident at 7 Baker Court, directly across the street from the proposed project. I've been working with Adam and his team for over two years now. They've been fantastic. My biggest concern, being on the fourth floor with a beautiful city skyline view, was that the height of the building and headhouse would obstruct my view. Adam and his team have been great about changing the angle of the headhouse to be parallel to my view as opposed to perpendicular and obstructing, and also moved it to the right away from everything that I was concerned with losing sight of. I'm 100% in favor of this project and wish Adam and his team to pass the law.
Thank you. And William Lawson, you've been unmuted. Thank you. And William Lawson, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you. William Lawson. I live at 8 Baker Court, which is just two doors down from this proposed project. And I'll reiterate, Adam has been great with all of us abutting building and has taken all of our feedback into account. So I'd just like to quickly say that I am in full support and I hope that this passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Chris with the carpenters. You know, we want to go in recognition for all of this project.
I'm sorry, there's a Ben Murphy here. Ben, you've been unmuted. Well, I sent a request over for you to be unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Adam and his team, I will echo what everyone else has been saying. They've been extremely responsive. We're very excited by their plan of what they like to do with the area. And so we are enthusiastically in support of this proposed project.
Okay. And then Leif Mitchell, been unmuted?
Yes, Leif Mitchell, 8 Baker Court, number four. Adam and his entire team have been very supportive of this entire project. We're very excited from our condo association to get this moving and get through this final hurdle. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve it, design review.
Okay, can we...
I'll second, Eric.
Can we have a proviso around trying to reduce the size of the headhouse?
Oh, yes. Yep, but, yep, well, yep.
I'll agree with that, second. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Following the last case of the day, calling BOA 117-0542-9-Downer-Court. Requesting of a new four-story, nine-unit apartment on grade, garage parking. Violation is Article 65, Section 8. The MFR is a forbidden use in a three-family sub-district. Article 65, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, the allowed height has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient reg yard setback. Article 65, Section 39, screening and buffering not proposed. And Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie and Associates, 183 State Street in Boston. Joining me on this, at this hearing are Timothy Fraser, my colleague, Matt Mueller, who will be the architect making the presentation, and as well, the owners of the project, Joan Rogirio and Michael Basin. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I preliminarily want to set the context for this conversation, and then I'll turn it over to Matt Mueller in order to give you the more details on the project. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a proposal, as was noted, for nine units. The, I just want to say at the outset that this address on Downer Court is the second largest parcel on this nine-parcel street in Dorchester. Originally, when my client brought this proposal, they were, my client was requesting 12 units. And after discussions with both the Greater Boston and Geneva Association and the Meeting House Hill Civic Association, client is now proposing nine units of condos with one affordable unit. And Mr. Mueller will talk to you about the specifics on the size of the units and the details there. Additionally, there is, will be storage and bike storage for those units. The parking that's required is 12, and we're having nine off-street parking spaces. And while we're still proposing nine condo units and trying to keep with the concept that has been discussed in the city providing housing for us, our residents, the neighborhood association had discussed with us the possibility of doing six units, but that made the project economically unfeasible. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Mueller to take you through the specifics of the project. So Matt?
Mr. Feaster, before we go over to Mr. Mueller, just, this is for, what's, why is this here for rediscussion? Was it because of the...
It is simply because when we were in, earlier deferrals were because we wanted to be in conversation with the community. This one here is as a result of the adminis, the issues that we had at the previous hearing where all of these hearings had to be moved to the state.
Okay, so during that process, it went from 12 to nine?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Let's proceed to Mr. Mueller.
Good morning, board. My name is Matt Mueller from Hugh Architecture, 181 Odom Street in Dorchester. So this building, as Mr. Feaster said, was a 12-unit, went down to nine units. It's a four-story building with nine garage parking spaces on the first floor, storage and a small office maintenance building on the first floor. Each floor above has three units, two-bedroom, two-bath. The smallest being approximately 900 square feet, the largest being 1,150 square feet. And those units are the same going up. Each unit has a small outdoor balcony space. And we feel that the four stories, although it exceeds the height, the neighboring three-story units are raised, so it's approximately comparable height. And I think that's the main point you're trying to hit for you guys.
Okay. I'm looking at the drawings in front. The south elevation is the front elevation, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And are those, is that, are those two garage doors on either side of the door to access the ground floor level garage?
No, sir. If the garage was on the side, if you look at the rendering on the first page, you'll see those are windows.
Okay, so then that elevation, okay, all right. That's clear. Okay, fine. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are fine. No issues with what's drawn. You know, I do worry, I feel like it's a little big. You know, in sort of surveying the area, there's really nothing over three stories. And I think this feels a little alking due to its, I think, its design, which is quite bulky in terms of the square. And so I'm a little nervous about its sort of height and density. Maybe add some more setback on it, it might feel a little bit better. And I'm a little bit worried, too, about the site plan and the access for some real green space in terms of the parking and the drive. So I'm feeling it's a little bit big for its spot, but I'll hear other comments from the board or from the community on that.
Seems like the lot coverage is almost total.
Yep.
Yeah.
You can see right here on that site plan, it's just, it's, you know, it's basically going in a corner on a non-square site. So it's...
It is all shaped off. Yes, and we do take it mostly off.
Yeah. All right. Any questions on the board? Okay, can we move the testimony?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Denise Santos here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to defer to the board. We did have community meetings where there's no support, there's all oppositions. The community was concerned around density and parking and just it being a one-way street. So the density and just the houses around it with the units and just safety hazards as far as fire coming into that dead-end street. They did defer, asked for a deferral to come back to the community, and they have yet to come back to the community members. So I just wanted to state that on our record. Thank you.
So was it, can I ask you a question on that, Denise? Was that, up that almost total opposition based on the 12-unit proposal or the nine-unit proposal or both?
They proposed 12. The community didn't support 12. They felt like that was too much. They came back to the community with nine. The community asked if they can bring it down to six units, just because there's not that, there's only three deckers on that street. And I believe it's only like three to four houses on that street. And they said they would come back with the new plans with the community, and they haven't. So it was the last thing that we showed to the community was the nine units, and they didn't support. And, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we do have those letters as well as the Mayor's Office, and it was the same concern with the nine units.
Okay, thank you. Any other testimony?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay. All right. Well, given...
Mr. Arlick, I just wanted to clarify, if I might, this is Attorney Feaster. Mr. Santos is correct that we did not come back before the community with regards to that. And I stated at the outset that the community had come back to us with the six, and that was communicated back to the community that that was not going to be what my client would be able to do. So I just don't want the record to reflect that my client may have ignored the community group's desire to do that. That was not the case. What we did do was communicate them in writing that we just could not agree to six units, and we would go forward with the nine.
Got it.
That's correct. Sorry about that, Joseph.
Understood. There was opposition to nine, and your client determined that it was not economically viable to go forward with six. So there is obviously a difference of perspective on this. Okay, I think, and I think that we're also concerned about the density and the lot coverage and the just bulkiness of the design as well. So I would entertain a motion at this point.
I just think it's too big. I think we need to deny without prejudice. And I think there's a project here. I understand the shape of the site. I just think this, nine units, maybe the units could be smaller. I just think it's too big for the site and the context of the street.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It's denied without prejudice. And hopefully, there could be a meeting of the minds for the slightly modified proposal. And with that...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Have a good rest of the day.
Always nice to see you, Mr. Feaster. And with that, I think we will adjourn the meeting. So long, everybody, and thank you to the board members.